This is Chris.
I'll text him.
We're beginning now.
Appreciate everybody's patience. We did make sure everyone can hear and we have the technology. We let them zoom, so everybody should be in there. Sounds like most of us have sound on the Zoom. See the auditorium can.
They can hear.
Okay. Okay.
Giving us thumbs up.
Okay.
Yeah. To check into.
So I'd love to call the Eastline Board of Education regular meeting back to order. We did. We started the meeting at 6:00 PM and we went into executive session to discuss contract negotiations. We've exited from executive session and now we will begin the meeting if everyone can stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
Just saying.
So thanks everyone for coming. I know. You know, in a perfect world, we'd all be in this room. That's what we're striving to do from last week to this week, but. And you see technology issues with just what we're doing where we have some. In order for us to have Zoom and people being able to speak and everything that was not. Or maybe we'll be able to do it for next week or something, but. If we would have had a get not have Zoom and then we could have done it all in the auditorium or do it this way and have a zoom. So we decided we do want to offer Zoom and there's 30 something people on Zoom. So we wanted to. This was the best, our best solution. We are continuing to think of. Other ways or other things where we can have everyone in one place, but we don't. Facilities right now don't work for that. And we have been working right. Grant has been working. Tyriously, just trying to get our all these setups to work and appreciate what Grant has done. So we want, we do want to move to public comment and we know people have signed up as a reminder, everyone. We need to public comment, give your name and address, and then we have three minutes. Jamie will keep the, have the three minute timer. And. I'm not going to hold to three minutes precisely, but if, when you start seeing three minutes, try to really wrap up. I don't want to have to say. You know, start saying, asking people to stop if I don't have to, but we will. It is something we will need to do. So with that being said, is there's, oh.
Eric, can I? Grant, I don't know if this is possible, but with so many people on Zoom and that image there, is it possible just to have the auditorium image be large unless somebody speaks? And then we can switch to that. So we can kind of get a, I mean, at least it looks more like they're here.
That's great.
Great, great idea. Thanks. Okay. So we can, we have a full image of, for those in the auditorium, we do have a full image of the auditorium. Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
That is a good idea.
I just want to start by thanking Pat House needs, the Secretary, the Secretarial Union Asking Council for. Local 133138. I'm just here to talk about our library aides again and the parents and the teachers that are under the. Layoff notice for the budget. And I believe all their positions will have a huge impact on our students, their district, staff morale, parents. And the teachers that remain, you know, I, I want to just introduce our library aid center here. Lisa, can you stand up? This is Lisa Upso. She does all three of elementary schools. And next to her is Christine Maxfield. She's one of the high school librarians in the other room. We do have Wade Powell. So she's a middle school library aide and we also have Jean Dargle who assisted in the high school as a library aide. They've been here from, I'm going to say three to three to four years to 30 some years. And when they were asked to do things above and beyond, such as when COVID hit, handing out laptops to students. Watching classrooms with students. Doing AP classes monitoring. I mean, they never said no. They just got it done. And. I handed out some sheets earlier. One has all the library tasks on it from the preschools. If I were to go down that list, we'd be here way over the three minutes. So I figured I'd just hand them out for staff. Board and. Staff to look at their leisure. We also handed out letters that came from the librarians themselves. That we'd like to do also when you have time to review, but I'm going to take a couple of points just off of those library. Letters and one of them I'm seeing, I'll have to close the library when I'm teaching if I don't have a library. We checked out thousands of books and thousands more of book hold requests. All things I'm not able to do by teaching a class full of rosters. Tasks will no longer be accomplished without an assistance. It will directly affect the ability of our students to access media centered collection and reduce my ability to work with faculty and staff. Another comment was made, the assistance is vital to the weekly operation and success of the library program. Libraries across the district rely on our highly qualified and trained library assistants to contribute to the completion of tasks. On their task lists that were handed out to you. Such important team members to be significantly impactful on all the library programs impacting the student experience. And the last comment there, well, second to last, next year there'll be no one to take over these responsibilities. The one comment that really got to me was. The gloom and doom of next year's budget. Passing on these duties will have to go to teachers and guidance counselors. All staff are overworked. With COVID things on behaviors and. Special ed and Bible course having raised significantly, it's impacted every. Staff member, whether it's a librarian aide, a librarian, a teacher, the principals and the secretaries. You're getting dumped on more and more and more and they've all stepped up and never said, no, I can't do it. They got it done and we hope that you'll have their backs and get them done and keep them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Upso, 7th Wobbling. I'm used to talking to little kids, so please bear with me. I'm sorry. Oh, yeah. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am the library assistant and rotate between all three elementary schools. Part of the secretary union, a resident of Eastline and a parent of four children who went through the school system. I strongly feel eliminating library assistant positions will have a negative impact on our students in the district. As stated at last week's meeting, library and elementary schools is not the library. We all remember when we were growing up. The running of the library is more complex process now. The library assistant is essential in assisting with the management and maintenance of the library. To allow librarians the ability to focus on their primary responsibility of instruction to students. I wanted to share a few stats with you at the elementary level, book circulation, checking in, checking out and shelving. As of today, this school year. We have done 19,176 books. Assisting with cataloging and processing new materials as of today, 1,017 books have been processed, labeled and cataloged this school year. Assisting in management of materials, labeling, covering, repairing and reading, this is an ongoing task and I mean, on a daily basis, that's two numbers to tell. There are many other tasks, but as previously stated, too many to mention in three minutes. More importantly is the support of our students. On any given day, an average six state students may visit the library prior to the start of the day, returning the book that's past due. Choosing a new book or picking up a book on hold. I'm able to make the library accessible to the students and staff while the librarians are prepping for their day, attending meetings or doing bus duty. During class time while a librarian is providing curriculum, lesson plans and assignments to students. The library assistant is checking in return books and checking new books out to students. In addition, a good portion of the time is spent assisting students. Answering questions, assisting with location of books, checking availability, inquiries about different types of books and more. Allowing the librarian to focus on the student instruction. Recently, a student was having a rough day. Their normal routine was a little off schedule. While other individuals were trying to help, the student became more agitated and unable to verbalize what they were looking for. Because I am there and assist in circulation, I get to know the students and their interests. I was able to provide the student with assistance in finding the book, even though they were unable to verbalize it. If there wasn't a library assistant, the librarian would be expected to adjust the situation, check materials in and out. And reinforce, it reinforced the curriculum while answering questions. Taking the library assistant out of the library will make a negative impact. It will limit. How the librarians will be able to implement lesson plans and curriculum, which in turn will have an impact on student learning. It will limit. I'm sorry, there will be missed opportunity of introducing students to new materials and reinforcement of library skills. With no support, the librarians may need to close the library at certain times to allow them to catch up on library maintenance. This will make the library less accessible to students and staff. Our job is to provide students with a solid foundation of learning to set them up for sex, for such success. Cutting these positions at elementary level will put our students at a disadvantage. I'm asking you to please fight for these positions that support our students' future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine Maxfield, 14 Green Cliff Road, Niantic, member of the secretarial union. And if you have teenagers, I'm also Mrs. Emma, the library lady. Respecting the board's time constraints, this is a very abbreviated version of my statement, but my full statement is in your packet. While I normally deal with letters, tonight is all about numbers. We've reduced our students to numbers. Identifiers, logins, and we subject them to an alphabet soup of exams to create more numbers. So when I was told one week before Christmas that my position was eliminated, wow, is that for a number? Because I had little impact, I naturally turned to numbers. I could certainly tell you how many books the high school library checks out, in and shelves. The last year that was 6,477. How many thousands of books I inventory and rearrange, 26,011. And even how many were weeded and stacked into donation bins because they had outlived their usefulness, apparently like me. I could tell you how many reservations we booked for the library, how many classes we monitor when substitute teachers are scarce. The number of phone calls that I make to homes to retrieve books, how many trips I make to the public library, the tasks I complete when others refuse. The numbers can be manipulated in so many ways, but for me, the impact lies in people, not numbers. Some of my memories, COVID fear raging in the beginning of the 2021 school year. Wednesdays were reserved for online work when I was at school. A frazzled mom needed to pick up a laptop for her child after she left work, perhaps by 3:15. So I clocked out at three o'clock and waited alone in our comments. She finally arrived clearly anxious, sad, down and began to cry. I held her hand while her tears fell, even though I did not count the number of tears. There was also a young man who used to come in and say hello to me every morning. One June day, he said, Mrs. Maxfield, I'm graduating. I just want to let you know, there were so many days I just didn't want to be here. But then I'd come and see you and you would tell me a corny joke and tell me to scoot to class and I thought, I can do it today. No one says school anymore, but I liked it. I remember AP classes that lacked proctors because of COVID fears. I poured over instructions and mandatory scripts and moved tables and chairs, quieted announcements, applied signage to our doors and ready equipment. One day at nearly five o'clock, my last student performed the vocal piece of the exam. It was beautiful. And the group of students were interviewing via Zoom for a summer internship at EB. It seemed to be going great. Until a panicked student looked at me and said, was I supposed to bring the laptop? I made it work, grabbed a laptop, gotten locked in, helped him find his Zoom link. And he was chosen for that internship. Thank you for allowing me to slightly exceed my three minute limit. It's such a small number to fit in 18 years. I hope my words have some impact on you, even if it's a fraction of the impact that the students have made on me. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Chris Marchak, some of the Chesterfield Road. I'm a TA at the middle school and president of the ASME para union. I'd like to begin by thanking board members for their diligence and dedication put forth on behalf of students and staff of Eastline. Now more than ever, our students need us to advocate for them. COVID learning losses have created huge academic holes we need, which need to be filled. At the TA at the middle school, I have firsthand experience. With how this is affecting learning in the classroom. My students often have difficulty initiating and sustaining work on task, on a task without direct adult assistance. My role is to support the 15 special ed students in Arkeith, but increasingly I'm called upon. To support the regular ed students who need help as well. It can be challenging for the classroom teacher and myself to provide the individual academic support and instruction needed by so many. Student social emotional needs require more time daily to address. I frequently take walks with students around the building to help calm them down. Apply the restorative. Practices, practice methods or work with them in a safe space away from the classroom. My situation's not unique. Teachers and paras across the district are working constantly to address the increasing needs of our students. Reducing staff will place a greater burden on our colleagues, spreading us even thinner and making it more difficult to adequately address COVID gaps and mental health concerns. Paris forms strong, meaningful connections with students while providing one-to-one and small group instruction. We enable the classroom teacher to deliver instruction more effectively with fewer interruptions. We help with material preparation, address individual student questions and concerns, and help manage and redirect unwanted behavior. Increasingly, we are called upon to provide coverage for teachers who are out ill or are temporarily called away from the classroom. A good para is priceless and it should be a high priority to hire and retain quality para professionals since they work so closely with our students. It is not a job for everyone. It takes intelligence, a nurturing but firm temperament, the ability to problem solve, endless patience. And a fair amount of time and experience to become skilled at the job. Good pairs are not a dime a dozen, but diamonds to be treasured. Fewer people are choosing to fill para positions and there is a shortage of para statewide. At the start of the year, our district had difficulty hiring enough paras to fill all the needed positions and some continue to remain unfilled. The shortage has put stress, step, well, stress on our staff, calling them away from the preferred positions they were hired to do. And burdening them with additional responsibilities. The proposed cuts will prove even more harmful to morale and our ability to address our students' needs. Can we get by with the 18.5 proposed position cuts? Yes, we can get by, but at what cost? The children of Eastline deserve better. They are our future and it is our job to equip them with an excellent education that will allow them to fly, not just get by. If this board cannot find other ways to decrease costs, I implore you to put forth a higher budget to the board of finance. Rather than eliminate the people who are directly educating and serving our children, please say no to frontline education.
Thank you.
Hold on, five, Russell. My comments tonight are going to be in stark contrast to my comments last week. So I'm going to address the board and. It was probably 2018, 2019 and we sat here and there was a review of statistics on how the students were doing in school. And it was data driven and there was presentations on how the board is going to collect more data. And everything is going to be data driven because we can gain more information about the students. At that time, Eric asked, well, I see all these things and they're great, but what? They've been the same for like three years. What can we do to make those things better? And at that time I got up and there was a couple of other parents that spoke as well. And one of the speakers that already spoke talked about numbers. We've put the kids as numbers and there was a lot of question about how do we understand the kids and what do those numbers mean? I got up and I spoke and I said, well, if you. Look at like a supply and demand curve, there's an equilibrium. And when you try to change that, so if there's more demand, more supply, it gets out of balance. And I feel like we've gotten out of bounds. We're trying to be more by putting money. And that's why I'm speaking about this is because of the budget. We're putting money into technology. We're putting money into things and we're not able to support it. Cause we buy a computer program, but then we don't have the tech support staff because we have to cut them the next year. Then we do something else. When we lost the internet for a week and a half this year. My kids came home from school and one of them said at the dinner table, the last few days have been my best days in school. Because the teachers took them out in the hallway, the teachers taught them. I sat here during the evaluations for the three elementary schools and everyone kept saying, we have great teachers. They could teach in a barn or a box or whatever they said. We are putting a lot of money into things and we don't understand the extended cost of these things. Technology is great and I'm all for it. I think we should have great technology, great tech ed, but there's an extended cost with technology. You have to keep reinvesting in the computers. You pay licensing fees. You do all this. I think it's time that the Board of Education go back and relook at what the students really need. To become better kids, better students, and it usually means teachers and staff. And so cutting all these positions as the librarians have said. We're going to institute a very expensive reading curriculum, but yet we're going to cut library aids. They don't make sense. If you were trying to make these decisions in some type of a business world, you'd be. Cutting off things that you need to succeed and it just, in my opinion, doesn't make sense. So that's my comments as we move forward. And the board of finance needs to give you more money.
Thank you very much.
Amy Ferrier. Amy Ferrier, 91 Holmes Road. I thank you for your time and dedication to the Eastline Public Schools. A lot of time and hard work goes into creating a student first and fiscally responsible budget. That time and hard work does not go unnoticed. However, I wanted to take a moment to share my concerns with the budget for this next school year. As a parent of a third grader and a first grader at Flanders Elementary School and a kindergarten teacher in a different district, I was shocked and saddened to hear. The drastic cuts in staffing specifically for classroom teachers. My son, who's the current third grader at Flanders Elementary School, this is his first normal year of school ever. He was a kindergarten in 2020. He left. This is the first year he's gone to school with no mask in a normal class size. And last year we were thrilled to hear that his group of kids were going to get added another teacher to his class. So we actually have a smaller class size. Well, that's not the case for next year. The smaller class size this year has allowed for students to rebuild some of those essential social skills, friendships and 21st century skills. That were not priority in the years prior due to COVID. And we all talk about the academic gaps. We're all facing that academic gaps and the academic loss, but we really need to focus on the social emotional health. And wellbeing of our students and the smaller class sizes really allowed for that to happen. I hate to continually use the pandemic as an excuse. However, it is a reality that we are all facing. To see that they will lose this teacher when moving up to fourth grade was really upsetting to us. We take back, why take back the progress we made and put these students who've only had one normal school year ever in this situation? Who are we really hurting? We're hurting the students. Haven't they lost enough? We need to move onward and upward past the COVID years. Sadly, these cuts are going to make Eastline move backwards. Eastline is a school district to be modeled after. People move to Eastline for the schools. We want this trend to continue. We want our students coming out of our school, prepared for the world ahead of them. We want them to be, have 21st century skills, digitally literate, and by cutting the, the elementary school technology program will definitely hold them back. My son's going to be in fourth grade the next year. He'll be going into middle school where computers and technology is an essential part of their everyday. As we just heard about, and it's going to set him back again. So he will be at a loss due to a budget cut. We're reducing our students to a bottom line. We are just hurting the students for bottom line of a budget. I am not naive. I realize the role of a board of education and I know how hard it is to create a budget in these times. But I really urge you to look beyond cutting people and positions and see how we can creatively present. A budget that is both fiscally responsible and student first. Thank you.
Chris Faulkner. I'm Chris Faulkner, a teacher at Lily B. Hanes. I've been a teacher in Eastline for 23 years. In those 23 years, I've taught third, fourth, fifth and sixth.
Give us your address.
Oh, Marford. You have those great addresses. Oh, yeah. 19 Windsor. Thank you. Yeah. So I've taught third, fourth, fifth and sixth grade. I've taught in the. Elementary schools and the middle schools. I've done other things like coached soccer for the middle school and run after school activities for Lily B. Hanes. So I've been here. I've done a lot when I started thinking about those things. So it's amazing. How long I've been here? I, I do want to thank the Board of Education and the superintendent. I can't imagine what it's like to try to make a, a budget in a time like this. And I'm very happy to hear that you're willing to take another look and consider other ways that we might be able to get through this together. We are in the midst of a once in a generation expansion. And frankly, it may be the biggest in our history. That's what Kevin Grady, the president of General Dynamics and Electric Boat, said in December to the Connecticut Business and Industry Association. He's referring to our $112 billion acquisition to build new separates. And here we are deciding for our children whether to double down on developing their ability to responsibly and effectively use technology in their future. We have a choice. Not them. We can give them the tools, the skills so that they're adept at communicating. Creating, collaborating, problem solving and acquiring information locally and globally. Or we can just hope their ability to compete in a technology-driven workspace in society just kind of happens on its own. It's been mentioned that the middle school teachers see deficits in student ability to use technology. And actually listening to the, some of the other speakers, when you say like, students might say it was the nicest time when we didn't have computers. That may be because they're not ready to use the computers. I hadn't been saying that, but maybe they need that experience with computers earlier so that when teachers are trying to teach them using technology. That they're more familiar with it. It's more seamless. I've seen kids in my classroom get very frustrated. When the technology is not working. So if they're not prepared in middle school or high school, that's what they're going to get there. I want to extrapolate this trend to a student that has graduate bidding from Eastline or graduate in the future. We're at a crossroads. Do we send them forth well honed with 21st century skills? Or do we let them once again figure it out on their own? For example, when that student applies for a job or applies for a position in college, will they have the skills to navigate a computerized online application? Will they have the skills to work in an online-based workspace? When competing for their spot in college or the job they're applying for, will they have that, that edge over the student from another district? When a student plans for a career. Will they have the knowledge of technology and its application to the workplace? Will they be inspired to become professional? In the field of technology. When a student, and think about when the student uses technology for personal reasons or civic responsibilities. Will they know the appropriate and responsible ways to communicate with others? Will they understand how to ask the right questions? Will they understand how to ask the right questions? Or find reliable sources of information? Or will students from other districts have an edge and therefore be heard more clearly than our students? Than our children? Electric Boat is hiring and will continue to hire for years to come. There are many companies that work with Electric Boat and they also will be hiring. Electric Boat is just one of the technology-based institutions in our area. Chris. Yeah. Almost done. Yeah. It's important that our children are ready for, is it important for our children to be ready for their opportunity that is right in their own backyard? I personally would love to see my students have the choice to stay here in southeastern Connecticut benefiting from our local economy. So here we are, making a choice to solve a present problem. Just remember what that choice will do to our students' future. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Amy.
Oh, sorry. Our next is Julian Evans.
Hello, my name is Julian Evans. I live on Bushville Road, Ibrington. I'm a Flanders school and the elementary technology educator. I've worked in the district for the past 23 years. I currently serve as one of the elementary technology education teachers and held this position for the past two years at Flanders. And prior to this, I have dedicated my career as a fourth grade teacher at Flanders. This letter comes from a person who has devoted a great deal of time, energy and love to the students of this district. It is my first time running to the board because I believe that we cannot shortchange the students and further restrict their academic and social emotional development. The proposed budget will greatly impact an already emotionally stressed group of students. The impacts of the pandemic on our students is seen on a daily basis and it is our duty to provide and nurturing an academically stimulating environment. We cannot do this if the proposed budget cuts essential workers and services. I transferred to my current position because I've always been passionate about technology and science. All students now have a device and it is paramount that we give each of them the skills and responsibility to adjust to this modality. It became evident to me that there is a limited time in the school day for elementary classroom teachers to use technology beyond the time standard adaptive software. For example, Lexia and I've read it. Our Eastline students need broader instruction and technology to cover the life skills of Windows, Office 365, Chrome and its extensions. We are living increasingly digital lives. And our students' ability to utilize technology will likely be a determining factor in their future jobs. It is essential that our Eastline students are equipped with the skills and knowledge necessary to navigate the digital landscape safely, effectively and ethically. Just like all the specials, technology education is loved by the students as it allows them to learn new skills, express themselves using video, audio, multimedia, and gives them the confidence and tools to navigate online environments we care. Technology education provides different experiences based upon grade level. One week in the gardeners will be learning internet safety. Another, they might be building a digital ABC book where they practice their phonics instruction by recording their voice. Students learn how to type in grades two to four, but exposure to the keyboard is initiated in kindergarten so that there'll be some level of fluency by middle school. As technology education teachers, we teach coding through Block, a free software which is used up to the college level, which leads students from all grades to understand the importance and logical procedures of computer science. It is a dynamic and attractive way to teach coding and develop assistance through problem solving. With the projected increase in computer science-related jobs well above the average for other work areas, we need to spark the next generation of codes. The U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics projects that jobs in computer and information technology will grow 15% from 2021 to 2031. Technology education teaches problem solving, critical thinking and creativity. Why would we eliminate instruction in these essential areas? In light of these facts, I urge the Board of Education to maintain technology education in our elementary schools. By providing students with a solid foundation in computer science and digital literacy, we are preparing them for success in the middle and high schools and by effect, 21st century. Eastline must continue to invest in our students' future. I've spoken to many parents over the years who have valued our amazing district for its high quality of education amenities and dedicated professionals. They chose to live Eastline because we all value education from preschool to high school. We should not let down the parents, the education professionals who work within the schools and most of all, the students who depend upon us every day to deliver. Proposed budget removes many parent professional and teacher positions. Parent professionals are an essential part of the fabric of a school, providing a conduit of learning for small groups or individual students. They're not highly paid, but I can say with confidence that they are highly regarded. We should not squander such talent as it is likely to be lost from Eastline permanently. Cutting teachers' jobs at the elementary level when we are still reading from the artifacts of the pandemic is not a caring solution. If the technology education teacher positions are lost, two of us will return to the classroom and likely buy new teachers from the district. We should be embracing these new teachers as they will take their considerable talents elsewhere. Please do not cut any of these positions, but maintain our current level of support. Thank you for consideration and I truly appreciate all the work you do.
Kyle Wilkinson.
Hello, I'm Kyle Wilkinson. I live at 16 Walnut Hill Road. I'm a middle school teacher. I teach math. And I'm the advisor to the Minecraft club. I'd like to start by thanking everyone. I really don't envy you guys in the position that you're in. When Jeff first hired me, you asked where I saw myself in 10 years and I think I laughed audibly when you said central office or administration. I couldn't do that. It's just not in my heart. I belong with the students. I moved here in 2008. My family made that decision based on the education system. And it was a great education system. I got a phenomenal education here. I went to college and people were surprised how much I do, how much I could help them. They didn't understand how to write a college-level paper. And I taught a lot of my peers how to do it because of the phenomenal people that we have in this district. So I can't thank them enough. People like Alexa Kidd. She stands out a lot. And Ryan A. Sco was a big help. In all my years in this district as a student, we had so many different resources, but I couldn't tell you what they were. But I remember a lot of the people because they made a big difference in my life. And if it weren't for those teachers, those librarians, those librarian aides to encourage me to go through and find a new book to read, I don't think I'd be standing where I am today. I see as a middle school teacher, a lot of the deficits that people have been talking about. And as a math teacher, you wouldn't expect that some of those reading concerns would bleed in, but they do. I see that even with my Algebra I students, they sometimes struggle to comprehend a question. And I get that mathematical terms can be very confusing. But they're getting stuck on things that wouldn't seem to be confusing to me. Just academic words like analyze. They don't understand what that means and it takes us time to reteach that. We're at a deficit with COVID. I understand that that's something to blame and if anything, that tells us we need to invest more money in the education system here. We need more support, not less. And I understand that it's not you guys that make the final decision, but it is the Board of Education that pushes the Board of Finance to see the problems that we have and the solutions that we could bring. I know there's a lot of push for technology. I'm getting a master's degree in educational technology. And although I spend a lot of time going to lectures and writing papers and doing projects about how beneficial technology is, at the end of the day, every single project that I've done ends with, but if it was just the technology, they wouldn't learn anything. It's all about the people that understand how that technology works are willing to spend the extra time to learn it themselves and spend the time in class to teach that to the students. And if they were to get that education at the elementary school level, I'm sure that they would come to me at the middle school with a better understanding, ready to learn the more difficult concepts where I could spend a little more time on those complicated words that they seem to get confused by every year, which is perfectly interesting. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm not going to take up much of your time tonight. I spoke at the last two meetings, two board meetings. And truly, I hope you won't have to hear me again, but I think I first want to bring to our attention, I know we can see them, but now talk about numbers. We're at capacity in this room. There are almost 50 people on Zoom, possibly more. I know some of them are board members, but there are many concerned citizens out there. And we have over 80 people in the auditorium. And I think about over a dozen. A dozen of them are students of various, varying grades. I think that says a lot about the concerns that our community has over this budget. But I left last week, last week's meeting cautiously optimistic. And I thank you for taking the time to try to really reexamine this as best you can. I know extremely hard work, a lot of hard decisions still to be made that you're looking at alternatives as best you can. My colleagues and my friends and my peers speak tonight. And I know that several folks have sent you some reading material as well that told their stories. All I would like to say is please listen. Please read their stories. Please continue to put students first. Please continue to find ways to make cuts that do not impact student learning. Not to cut our teachers.
Yes.
Annie Campbell.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Annie Campbell. I live on 6 South, Covlish Port in Niantic. And I just want to first say thank you to all of our teachers and educators and all of you. My children have been in the school system here since integrated preschool. I have signed daughter. And I thought long and hard, obviously, tonight about bringing and having them do the speaking. Because since integrated preschool, the thing that we have taught our children is to advocate for themselves. And I believe today, if my children were standing here advocating for themselves and telling you what they need and how they have succeeded in their education, it would be because of every single one of the teachers and not much to do with mom or dad. It starts here. And this is, this is truthfully where it needs to happen for all of them, not just mine. As a parent with a student who receives academic support, whether or not it is served under an IEP or 504, the importance of individualized accommodations implemented with fidelity cannot happen with limited staff members. These children are people. They are not boxes meant to be checked. They have different learning styles. How will you ensure that they are followed with fidelity? That students' accommodations and goals are being implemented and are achieved? And let's not forget the students who require differentiation at higher levels, enrichment or acceleration or any other level for that matter. How do we expect the school to teach multiple intelligence if we do not have the staff to do so? How can I trust that the school has the support so my children or any other child for that matter can achieve academically or socially moving forward?
Thank you.
Andrea Wani.
Andrea Wani. I live out 41 Seabreeze in Niantic. So I get to go to a board meeting every day this month. I'm an assistant principal in a local district, so we are in the realms right with you of creating a budget. A little background, I have two children in this district. I have a second grader and a soon-to-be kindergarten. I have a husband that's a PE teacher at Flanders Elementary School. And I'm an assistant principal, like I said, a reading specialist by trade elementary and middle school teacher. I've been there. I know every position of this, you know, every facet, every perspective. Talking on the teacher's perspective, how they're feeling right now, they're not feeling appreciated. When they see a budget like this coming off of a pandemic, they don't feel the appreciation. How can we do that to teachers that were up all night when in 24 hours, you're telling them we're closing down for two weeks and you need to learn this technology? You know, and now coming out of the pandemic, they are nurturing our children's social emotional wellbeing. You know, they are closing those gaps that naturally just happened. I can imagine how they feel. I know you're not trying to do this on purpose, but but when they see a budget like that, that's how they feel. And what happens? The morale goes down, there goes the culture, there goes the climate. There's the saying, happy wife, happy life. It's the same thing in a building. When that morale goes down, how are we expecting them to produce that high-quality education for our students and put the smiles on their faces when they're feeling not valued? So now I take you on the admin perspective, you know, with the realm of the building, we're the faith, that smile that keeps our teachers going. And now all these administrators in the building, they have to put a happy faith on when they're feeling terrible for their teachers. But most importantly, they're having to get test scores and, you know, S back scores come out and we're still held accountable even though we have all these things stacked against us. You know, we need to make sure that all our teachers are differentiating that students are getting everything they need socially, emotionally. But all, we have 18.5 positions left. How are they doing that? How are they keeping that climate going in their building when it's stacked against us? And now most importantly, I'm taking the perspective of a mother. A daughter that has, you know, some different challenges already. So my mom will bear things out mentally. But a daughter that has already been impacted by decisions that the board made last year. She went from a first grade environment where she was in three smaller class sizes to two at Niantic Center School this year. Her class currently has 22 students. Is that fair that her teacher is not able to get to every student as frequently as they should? As frequently as they were educated last year in small group? Going from a class size of 16 to 22, that means that's one to two less reading rooms a day that teacher can do. One to two math groups left. One to two writing groups. Is that fair to our students? Is that fair to the teacher that has to put her head on the pillow knowing that she cannot get to all those students that need it? My daughter had kindergarten two days a week that she was in the building for three fourths of her school year. Last year, she's learning her foundational skills, first grade where they have to jump so many levels. She's having to do that mostly math. So that's two years of her foundational skills hindered. And now she went into second grade already has a deficit with a higher class size. And now we're going to do it again. So in the Montevani family, this is affecting us again because now it's proposed that her second grade class is going to go from potentially going back to three classrooms, smaller class size again. We're cutting it down to two. And that's not fair. That's not fair to the administrators. That's not fair to the teachers that work tirelessly. That's not fair to the parents. And this is just going to be a trickle effect. Because you take away parent support, you take away teachers, there's going to be more gaps, more students that need intervention. Who's going to provide those interventions if we don't have parents? Then what's going to happen? We're going to eventually have to spend the money. Because if student gaps are not closed, there's going to be students with more identifications, more special education identification. And guess what? Legally, we're going to bid, have to provide the services. So eventually that money is going to give you space. So why not spend it now? Keep it satisfied. Show our teachers. We appreciate them. Keep that morale high. Thank you, teachers.
Thank you.
Theodore Bergman.
Good evening. My name is Ted Bergman and I live 15 Fond Run, Salem, Connecticut. I'm actually a student representative on the Salem Board of Education, but I skipped because I knew I needed to be here to say this. As you may have noticed, like me, several students are attending this meeting tonight. As you may have noticed, like me, several students are attending this meeting tonight. The students that are here are here because they stand strong as a united front behind our teachers. And our school. The teachers and staff of ELPS exude unparalleled amounts of kindness, empathy, professionalism, and respect. And I'm here to attempt to protect them. For example, I, as a member of the Viking Saga, became very familiar with the special and warm environment of Coastal Connections. To see it downsized is frankly disheartening. The library, the library is a complex place with many moving parts that would simply be unable to function with only one staff member. Not to mention the always kind and ever helpful souls of Christine Maxfield, Jan Drugal, and all the other library assistant staff in Eastline Public Schools. Elementary school is the foundation of one's education. Without the best education at an early stage, the walls of the student's abilities, ability to learn start to crack. And as I wrap up, I want to let you know that I thank you, you and the board, for all the work you do for our district. But please, stick to your job, protect our students. That's why you're here. And the students of Eastline stand powerfully behind our teachers. All we ask is that you do too. Thank you.
Nick Mediface?
Can you guys hear me all right? So I honestly, I think a lot of what I want to say up here is, oh, I'm sorry about that. Nick Mediface, I live at thirty-eight Hope Street, Niantic. And like I said, a lot of what is, you know, I'm going to say, I think has been said a lot for this one tonight, but every time I see this, the proposal to cut these eighteen jobs, I just think about how really wasn't very long ago that we were talking about heroes. And how teachers were heroes for what they do. And now we're here, a little over two years later. And it's like, well, that's it all for now. They're not heroes anymore. We're going to take their jobs. I don't know how many of you guys have really ever been in a classroom. But everything about our school system runs on the fact, and I should preface this, I am a teacher, I'm not a teacher here in Eastline, but I do live here. And I always am told of how great these schools are. And everything about this education system relies on our teachers and our paraprofessionals for the selfless work that they're doing. You are asking them to take on bigger classes, to take on less support from what is essentially our co-teachers on this ones. And you are asking to do more because there is so much that our students need to make up for. That they need to get better on. And your thing is, no, 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 they can take it. We'll just give them more work. And I'll be frank with this, that this budget issue is not their fault. This budget is the one that you all passed the year ago. And there's a lot of unforeseen things that go in there. But I think that I speak for a lot of them. I ask the first thing is, what are you going to do? What sacrifices are you making? Because it's certainly not your jobs. You're still here. You're not asking anyone else to like, you're not going to step down because of this. I just, I don't understand how in, in less than three years, we go from teachers are heroes, they're invaluable. To no, we don't need them. All right, I think I'll stop there for that one. I think everything else has been said, but this is the work of every single one of these jobs that you are trying to cut is invaluable. And you need to find a different way. You absolutely do, because this, I don't know how you ask any more of our teachers. I really don't. Thank you.
Hi, I am Ed McDonald and I live at two twelve Ponce, Niantic. I just want to talk about some of the, I don't know, I guess we could say rumors around town, some of the information I've seen pass along about cuts. And before I get into that, I want to try to turn my perspective on this into a different tack than maybe we've been hearing. So in my life, outside of being a parent to two children in this healthcare, or sorry, in this school system. I'm a leader in a local healthcare system and I am a leader of both union and non-union staff. And I have been in the trenches of healthcare during COVID as a respiratory therapist for the last, I've been one for seventeen years. Most people didn't know what a respiratory therapist was before the pandemic, and they definitely do now. And I think it's really important that I point out in this conversation that I have, I lead both union and non-union staff. And I want to say that with the utmost respect of everyone that I lead. My staff is incredible. The other staff in the union environments are incredible, but I don't want to talk rhetoric right now, which is often what we hear. I want to talk facts. And these facts, the fact is, yes, teachers are very important. The facts are that we need to do the best we can for our kids. But the facts I want to talk about are some of the cuts that are discussed, not at the teaching level, but other ways to find money to balance the budget. I literally pulled information from peer review journals because I feel that is the most, science doesn't lie, right? And that's what we need. Facts don't lie, data doesn't lie. We all know that the COVID nineteen pandemic is a traumatic experience. And according to the American Association, Psychiatric Association. COVID nineteen will be never known as a traumatic childhood experience. So when we talk about cuts and ways of finding money through taking money through sports or taking money, asking other sports organizations in this town to pay money to help balance the budget. We are taking away the scientifically proven ways to help children work their lives through trauma. We know from data, we know from the National Health Institute and the American Association of Pediatrics that sports and youth sports reduce recreational drug use. We know that, the data is there. We know, according to the American Academy of Pediatrics, that children and teenagers who play sports have improved mental health. The fact is COVID nineteen has ruined or is diminishing children's mental health. And we know statistically, scientifically, there are ways that we can help that. We know through the CDC, that youth sports equals higher fitness, lower body fat, stronger muscles and bones, improves attention and memory, and reduces risk of depression. I have lots of facts. I sent it in an email. But the point I want to make is to the little notes that I'm seeing where there's conversation about asking certain youth programs to pay for their gym space time. That will undoubtedly shut down those programs. And when you shut down programs that keep children healthy and keep children's mental health in check and keep children from turning towards recreational drugs. You are, you are making it in a cut that is priceless. You can't make that cut. There is no price on that. When we talk about the suggestion that I saw out there of cutting freshman sports. Again, we are talking about one of the most pivotal moments in a child's life. Of coming to a high school, coming to a new school and not giving them the outlet to keep them safe. To keep their physical and mental well-being in check. The results could be catastrophic. So all I really wanted to speak here tonight was about facts. And while I, obviously, I understand that FTEs count, FTE equal budget, FTE is equal money. And sometimes those have to be reduced. And I don't want to see that. I want to see it happen to my staff. I want to see it happen in healthcare. I don't want it to see it happen here. I just want to make sure that we are looking at very creative ways to support our students and not take from our students. It feels as though, and it looks as though from looking at budgets from around multiple surrounding cities that the Board of Education budget is often something that gets tapped first to save funds within a town. And it's just time that we stop taking the children and find other places. Outside the box, are there things that we're currently paying for that can be volunteer hours instead? Or is there areas to ask families to have to chip in a little to be able to keep things going? Whatever we can do to find a way is, you know, just really needs to explore and that's my thinking. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last one I have signed up is Sarah Susko.
Hello. First, I want to thank the board and superintendent. Oh, I'm sorry, Sarah Susko. Again, thank you all for everything you do. I appreciate it. I decided to speak last minute today for two reasons. The first is someone said something to me that really stuck with me. And this person is a chair of a board in another town in Connecticut. And she said to me, when the budget is released every year, I look at it as a story. And I asked our superintendent, or I wonder what story is our superintendent trying to tell us? What does it mean when the superintendent's taking money out of another place or giving more somewhere else? What's the story? And the second reason I decided to speak is because I was looking at the budget today. And I was realized that it's hard to gauge what makes a number. So when I see the custodial budget of two hundred and thirty dollars at Lily B. Haynes, what makes that? So I had to do some research and I looked on the Eastline Public Schools website and I saw that they had all the custodian names listed in the schools they worked at. It was pretty cumbersome, but I counted four. So now I know that there are four custodians at Lily B. Haynes with a budget of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And the reason why I'm saying this is because I want the board here to ask what's in these numbers. When you're reviewing your line-by-line budget and you're discussing it with Superintendent Newton. I want you to understand and ask these questions. What makes up these numbers? What is the impact of losing these numbers or gaining these numbers? You guys are our board. You're here to advocate for our students, our school staff. You need this information to do this. So that's, that's all I wanted to say today. And then lastly, I did just want to, going off of my story. I did want to ask Mr. Newman, you don't have to answer, obviously, but to think about, what's the story that you're trying to tell all of us with your budget this year? Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
I have no one else signed up, but I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. If there's anyone else who'd like to make public comment.
Anyone from the auditorium?
Anyone that we can contact in the auditorium to see if there's anyone who wants to just.
I'll run.
Just saw two people got a, I don't know if they got a leave.
This is Jones, would you, well, we can see if they want.
It's a no right to go.
Is Mr. Olson still over in the, Chris, out there? He was going back and forth. Okay, yeah, we just wanted to check to see if there's anybody else in the auditorium then. Yeah, the auditorium, one last call. Maybe use the sign-up sheet. Yeah, maybe one last check.
Can you hear us?
Oh, wait, Chris.
No, that's Grace, but that's, can you hear us?
Yes, you can, Grace.
Does anybody have anything that they would like to speak at this time? I think we're all set in here.
Okay, thanks, Grace. Appreciate it. Thanks, everyone. One more, once, once we're done, then we close public comments. So any last? Anyone else for a public comment? Okay, then we will close public comment. Thank you, everyone, for your words. We do appreciate it. Something that we value, hearing this, it's the best way that we, helps us make decisions and with information. So really do appreciate everyone being here and giving us that information and feedback. The next topic, we need some approval of some minutes. So we have the minutes from the January ninth meeting. Any comments, edits? Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'd like to take a motion to approve the minutes of the October meeting. The January ninth, twenty twenty-three Board of Education meeting.
And the second further comment. I can see Laura. Okay, Laura, just put a thumbs up in there or thumbs up when you, when we approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or a thumbs up. Opposed, abstaining. Okay, minutes passed. And then we have, we have another set of minutes from the special meeting that we had last week. Any comments or changes? A motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
And the second further comment. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Laura, thumbs up. Okay, opposed. Staying. Okay, those minutes passed. We have, next is special reports and we have, and we'll give an update on the floodments.
We're just letting it on February first, twenty twenty-three. The highlights are the continuing discussions on merger of the parking rent and youth services. There's also a continuing discussion on electric vehicle charging stations. They're supposed to be level two charging vehicles at Hope Street and Rapidus. And we're on a waiting list for the level three charging stations. The Board of Selectmen authorized the first selectman to sign the American Disabilities Act settlement. This is approved and this will fix the town all to major ADA compliant. Oh, something else will impact the high school is, there's a one sixty-one corridor study. And we reported that a high school, they're trying to put a dedicated treading lane for the high school. So that at arrival dismissal time, it will be as suggested, which I thought was. That's, that was about it. Does anybody have any questions?
The high school seems excited about the term.
And do we know what the settlement might run in terms of money for?
So settlement, this is basically to prevent, you know, a lawsuit from the United States. There's supposed to be, I guess, going forward with all the changes, they make it compliant in thirty-three months. I think for the budget, it said that it's going to be, I think in the budget this year, a hundred and seventy-five thousand. This is something that is required to be done. And then, so that's, that's where it stands.
We don't like to talk rainy day, but undesignated fund balance, is that something that can be brought out of that?
I'm not sure how that, that is not, we just basically gave the first law the authority to sign the settlement agreement. So it was basically to prevent any type of litigation, so I'm free on that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any questions, Brad? Sure. Okay, next we have, we're not, and Brendan to give updates from high school.
Okay, so good evening. First of all, I want to say, but thank you all the speakers and those who attended the meetings today. Some updates from the high school. We have started the third quarter. There's a coral exchange, concert with Bacon Academy on February tenth. Junior parent night slash college planning night is on February sixteenth, and we have winter ball on.
And to continue on that, there's a dine-out for my class, the class of twenty twenty-three at Olliano's. So.
Yeah, there's two, this, yeah.
I, I guess, you guys are on the same.
Well, everybody on their way home, stop.
Either way, you're better. So, this pizza. And boys, girls, boys and girls track one ECCs this past Saturday night. So that was really big for us. And I'd like to conclude by saying thank you to my classmates, teachers and administrators for being here tonight. I admire and appreciate their dedication and really just like, like the amount they care about our school system. It, it makes me really proud to be for this school system and as Ted said before, or Theodore. Student body standing behind our teachers, standing their interests. So thank you again, and. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your help with my thoughts.
Any questions? Thanks so much. You were more than welcome. Okay, so that ends special report. We have two items on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Laura's thumbs up, and I, opposed, abstaining. Okay, motion passes. So the first item, those at home and here. First was the approval of a donation from Pfizer, Harry North, yeah, the benevolity causes portal to Eastline High School in the amount of 720 cents. So thank you, Carrie and Pfizer, that donation. And the second is a donation from the Manic Rotary Grants Committee to Eastline High School in the amount of $1,000. But thanks also to the Manic Rotary for doing that, these donations. Very helpful and appreciate both giving and helping out our schools. That was the consent agenda item. And now we move to the discussion action items. And first is on financial facilities of community. And the first agenda topic is the superintendent's proposed budget for 23 and 24. So. Do you want to go live, go through the object code first? Do you want to talk about? So in the, in the documents, yep, as we asked, if you recall, there were kind of two actions from our last meeting. One is to go through each of the object codes and go through line by line to see if there's things that we have questions about and can find and find some savings. The other was to come up with some, what would options be for savings? It's not necessarily ones that Jeff and the administration are saying we should do. These are just options. These are things that, okay, if we turn over every stone, these are the things that we could do to find savings. So that's what the document that was included, you know, represents. So I was thinking in terms of order, maybe we go through the object codes to see what we find there and then we can talk about the options. That works, yeah. However, yeah, I would want to do, I think that's probably done. So.
So you can either use tab seven, you can use tab two. Tab two just gives you a breakdown of all the object codes. And then you can reference the full budget detail under tab seven, which, you know, if there's a line item question per se.
And two and tabs.
I have two and tabs.
Two and tabs summary, and then you have seven.
In your review, something stood out in one of those object codes. 1,000 down, or the 100 down, sorry. We could dive into deeper or have a discussion on it. Like to.
So does anyone, maybe we start in looking at the 100 series? Or the salaries, or any, as we look for those, is there anything that looks surprising, you can understand, want to dig in deeper? And then we can go to the.
Yeah, yeah, I, I mean, I, as we've talked about, just the clarification for each of these things. So, I mean, starting right at the top of the list, obviously, we have administrative increase of, you know, over 5%. So I'm just, what's driving that number, I guess, that 133 number?
Can we talk about how many administrators and who listen, I mean, not names necessarily, but how many are we referencing?
Well, the allotment of ministers hasn't, you know, changed in the years, the last eight or nine years. We did through COVID increased by a point five. Next year is supposed decrease of point five administration going into next year. So you're talking, I don't have the exact number here, but we had roughly, including directors or principals.
I don't know what we made by administrative, administrator, administrator line includes all of the school principals. And includes the staff, the certain administrator staff at central office like myself, Chris Long, Jeff, families. But then it also includes what the proposal for the new meeting.
So.
That was offset in other areas.
To understand, we are decreasing the number of people by point five for next year. Yet we still have an increase of 5.19%.
You know, you're rolling over the money for the ED. Yeah, so the stipends, that's, that's a position that's going in that was being funded through Mr. Hargis's teaching salary. All the stipends that are associated with it. So now you're taking that and putting it into this line item.
So that was moved from a different line item.
Yeah.
Okay, but so we don't really have a reduction. We have an increase because there's a new position.
Yeah, look, you got it two different ways. Exactly. The over, you got two different questions going on. Kate was asking our total overall. Look, yes, we're reducing one, we're adding one, correct? Yes.
We're reducing a half.
We're reducing a half and we're. Yeah, so we're really adding. But you're not, but there's not a, yeah, but the, the costs though, for the one additional is being funded in a different, in a different manner.
Yeah, no, so, so that, that bump is, should show as a reduction in, in, in what, what line is that reduction shown?
One, object code 125 on those stipends and then it shows in the, you look at the details, it's in the 111 as well. It's 001, 10, 11, it's in the math line.
Okay.
So if you're looking at the detail, I guess, so if you're looking at the object code, if there's a reduction in the 111 line and in the 125 line. But obviously, if you look at the total in the front, you're not going to see a reduction.
That's, I'm, I'm, just wanted to understand how we're reducing, yet the number's going up. That's, that just want to understand.
And the reduction in the 125.
All right, I got a few others. I don't know if anybody else has others on this page. So other certified salaries, what is that 94,000? What is that? One, no, line number 118.
The increase.
Yeah.
And I guess my question is, those are, so are they really, that, whether OT, RPT, or Coda, speech services are also.
Now, is that contracted?
No, they're all.
So they're all employees? Would it be a savings to go out contracted or would it cost more?
Yeah, well, we're not, we wouldn't be allowed to. It's a violation by IRS.
Okay.
Because they are considering.
Or, cost more too.
So I'm just checking your, your questions.
Worth a question.
Yeah. And, all right, jump into the next one then. Substitute certified, we've got 100% increase there. What does it?
So those are all of our long-term subs that are hired. We hire our own long-term subs. They're not part of Kelly. So I'm just basing that on what we are spending this year and what we have spent historically. It's increased, can't control that. I mean, we've had just quite a few people out on lead, medical lead that we need to provide a long-term sub for. So when I look at historically what we've spent, I, that one, I increased it to natural for spending this year.
We're spending more for long-term.
I was gonna say.
Cost for that is increased, yeah. Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. The pension one, we already touched upon, that that's an increase that.
So that's correct. That is an increase based on what I'm estimating. I, I don't know. I'll have a better handle on that number on February. I think it's February 16th is the Pension Board Committee meeting. So the actuary will do a presentation and I'll have a better handle as to whether that amount is, is fair or not. It's based on market value of the pension plan. And it's the pension plan that's at the town. It's for our non-certified staff, our, you know, secretaries, custodians.
Hold up one sec. So can we, just on the 100s, before we move to the 200s. Yeah, that's, I just wanted to say.
So I had a question last week on the line items. It's for sets, non-certified safety. My question revolves around the fact that one employee is getting a 41% raise. And it's not reflected at all with the other safety personnel are getting. So he's not getting, getting a raise. He's getting extra days. So we added extra days to the Flanders School Safety and Security. Now, because he's going to be at Flanders School, it just happens to be where he's located, but he'll be working ESY in our summer programs. So we typically would hire someone and pay them an hourly rate. So rather, and sometimes, you know, it's harder to find people that would want to do that. We decided to add those days. We posted the position and he applied. And so he just has extra days and that's allocated for the summer programs. Okay? It just happened that.
That makes, it's way more.
Yeah. He's working extra day. Okay. That's, yeah.
Have it to programs, parking rent, over the summer. Set it for your hands at a certain time, but chart for the additional time for. So on the ship, they're going to want to do that next year or this coming summer. So that could be an additional to us. We'll see.
Thank you. Did you have a question?
That was my exact question.
Oh, okay. So I'm thinking about our instructional assistance and monetary aids.
Are you on 126 and 127 of, okay?
What is their wage, their salary?
So, so instructor professionals are, you know, court of bargaining agreements. So depending on the step that they're on. But then, it's an instructional system. I think the bottom step where they would start $16. And I believe the teaching assistant is $18.84. That would be the bottom, they're starting.
And how high do they, the IAs.
So it's a $3 stipend that comes into play.
Yeah, there's some.
For some of them, upwards of 23, maybe?
Yeah, 23. Here is the I is saving 23. If you have other questions, I'll look up their contract now. Thank you. And I, so I don't know where, what I'm going to speak to is on, on the object code, but in the line by line, on page seven. So it is, it's pretty wide, other certified salaries sped. And it's going up, I mean, it's going up about $17,000, but it's a line item upage of 266. So with those that item and then the one underneath, you see the 54,900, so the 54,900, those are services that we're budgeting for next year that we have been providing for our extended school year staff. For our extended school year programs, so that's what that $54,000 is. And then the 17,400 is additional salaries that are within our, are within our OTPT certified staff. They have extra hours that they have to work, whether it's for meetings, whether it's for planning. Expect that to go up that high? It's for all of them. So, because it's currently at 1,800 and it's going to go up to 19,000. So, yes, the variance is 17,000. Yes.
It's a 7000 increase, yeah.
Yeah, but we're expecting it to go up from 1,800 to 17,000 hours.
Do you have any input on?
We added the, so our, our related service. So if I understood the question properly, the related service contractors had a provision added to their contracts last year, the year before, I believe, where, that allows them to attend our faculty meetings and the PLT meetings. And be paid for that time. That wasn't in their contract before. They just had their workday followed the student workday. So they did not have time outside of those hours to do the collaboration with their colleagues. And so we added those four hours to the staff members' contracts. I think that's what you're seeing accurately, much of it. So OTPT and speech are now going to be coming to staff meeting. They can, yeah. They can, they have flexibility. They can use it for scheduling testing with a student. It's just four hours that allows them that flexibility. So, or hours of staff number per month. Yep.
Other questions on the 100s? And we can always come back to.
So I just have a question, because this isn't what I thought it was going to be. I'll be honest with you. I thought that we would go line by line and go through each one. So maybe I'm expecting something different. Maybe I'm wrong. I don't know. What I'm hearing from people are they're looking for different options. So I've heard from others, from others, what's about the possibility of freezing salaries? Or going back to negotiations? What I haven't heard is administration, can we look at freezing administrations? Amount of money that they're going up. So there's a lot that we're asking questions about. There's a lot that I'm looking at. I don't even know what it is. I'll be honest with you. I don't even know where the money is. I don't know what it is. So instead of picking and choosing one here or one there, my hope and what was behind me asking for it at the last meeting was to literally go through each line. That's what I was hoping to do. And is it wrong of me to want that? Or should I just not and just kind of go along with the flow and not ask? Or is it because it's not usual or I don't know?
30 pages of.
Yeah, 30 pages.
20 lines of data per, per, so we can. I mean, we thought by starting by object code, we can do kind of management by exception. So you see something that you don't like or concerned about or don't understand, we can go through it. We can go line by line. I mean, I'll leave it to see what.
What everybody else thinks. And if that's okay, if you don't agree, I just. All I got. All I got.
People want to go.
Looking line by line, right, it just. To make this a productive review, so we're looking at the sections and I think. You know, looking at some of the, like, so salaries and benefits, right, and. Areas where we have, I would say, less. The rooms, so to speak, or, or that are contractually built into. This budget. I, I think. Putting in them as. As groupings, right, of the object codes, it would make sense and then maybe drill into. Some of the other areas where, you know, we, we've seen. Call something out or look at something different. So where the negotiation pieces can come in, I think.
Other thoughts on how we approach this?
So I prefer the line by lines part of the budget. It helps me see where the bigger differentials are. As opposed to the object code. But the line by line does get tedious. I think maybe we just do the line by line if we have a question on the line, I mean, we don't have to ask a question on every single line by line.
So what, so that, so what if this, so I, so what if we go to the section seven? And we go object code, so take the first, instead of, so can see, can this work, so we go through there. But instead of saying, you know. And go through and then each one, we start and say, okay, when object code one oh one, here are the rows. Are there any questions on any of these rows and then we can speak to that.
Okay.
Which may facilitate a little bit with that.
I think yes.
I am definitely open to the blunder approach. Understanding. The different parts of our budget that are fixed and all of the feedback that you're urging me. I think we are going to eventually need to have a pretty frank discussion around. Are we actually going to increase the, you know, what we're asking for? And I, I know that's a tough conversation to have, but I think eventually if we do line by line. Maybe two hours from now, we're gonna have that same conversation. And I, I know that sounds, I don't like to be pessimistic and I think when we're talking about. What we know of our budget to be fixed, like, that's the reality that we're gonna need to ultimately have some discourse on and I'm curious. I know we're at six point nine seven right now. If we were not to eliminate the eighteen point five, what would that percentage look like?
Ten point.
Ten point three zero.
Three, ten point three zero. Cause I know that was the word initially came in as.
Yeah, that's where we were at.
There were no additional asks in that ten point three zero.
That was just rolling everything, everything over and keeping every.
Yeah, I, I think we might be able to make some small gains here or there, but at the end of the day, I don't think our big picture has changed.
Jamie?
I, I, I'm one hundred percent agree with you. I don't think doing this is gonna find us anything except for maybe a hundred dollars here or there, maybe a thousand dollars. If we're lucky, ten to twenty thousand dollars, I don't think we're gonna find. What it is we're looking for to make the budget the six percent or whatever it was. I don't think we're gonna find what we need to fill in a six point nine seven gap, so we are not. Going with the proposed budget. And I'll say that I asked for all the documents I asked for last week. Not so that we would turn around and then charge sports teams to use the facilities. I asked for those numbers so that the town could see what parents are already paying for sports. I know paper play comes up every budget season. And I know that our parents already put out tons and tons of money to pay to play. We, the sports are not one hundred percent funded by the schools. So that was not my idea at all, I just want everybody to know that my idea was not to then turn around and charge. People to use the gyms and the facilities, I just wanted the public to be aware of when they say make the kids pay to play. The kids are already paying play. So I, in no. Form wanted that to be something that we're adding to the budget. Making people play and use the gym when they don't really play. And I have to say that I was just concerted to see that we put on. The Viking band paying to use the facilities when they are a school. Organization, I guess I didn't understand where that would come from.
Or eliminating freshman sports.
I know they're not, but I know that sometimes we have people from the public who come in here. And they ask us to cut freshman sports, they ask us to cut sports, they ask us to paper play, they ask us to cut clubs. And I can't. In any good conscience, cut sports or cut clubs. I, I can't even cut teachers, I can't cut aides, I can't cut staff when. The state and the federal government can't appropriately fund education. They leave it to the backs of the municipalities and the taxpayers to fund the education system. When it should be the state federal government.
I think just to, sorry, to be fair to Jeff and what he had pulled together. We asked and said, what options would we have and there, there aren't a lot of, kind of Lee's point. We don't have a lot of levers, but, or, you know.
Work to go the line by line, we're not gonna find it, we need to have the frank discussion on what we're going to do. The line by line isn't gonna get us anywhere.
Uh, it's called at least, and then I saw Bill, well, actually, I'll go Esteban, Bill. Well, did you raise your hand or not? Okay, you did, I knew your name, I didn't remember it, right? And then.
I just wanted to say eight point nine eight percent and we have back the cuts in Dallas.
So what's the difference between the eight point nine and the ten point three?
Eight thousand and other cups that have been made on.
We already did it.
From the dollar amount on eight point nine eight. Yeah, a dollar amount is.
Just to go from six nine seven up to the eight point nine.
You want the dollar amount? Oh, okay, that's all right, yeah.
So that's a million dollars, it's a little.
Yeah, it's a million and eighty seven. Fifty seven. Oh, you want the.
Oh, the total.
Sorry, I'm having a really hard time. Fifty eight, nine sixty five, fifty eight million, nine sixty five, one seventy seven. If we put that, thank all of the salary.
Lisa, Esteban, Bill.
Thanks, I'm just going back to what we're talking percentages, so let's, let's just stay there for a moment, but. We did ask them to go back and look at options, necessarily recommendations, right? And I, and I did look at. You know, some, the options, you know, with, um, different given, getting right, I guess. In thinking of the percentage rates. You have, you know, the percentage given different options that, you know, are, are.
It would all depend on the staff in which you add back in, or, I mean, you, you can kind of use the number of one certified staff number, sixty five thousand is the number that we. Use as a placeholder, so you could, if you're adding a few back in, get out of the numbers, is that what you're asking?
So those scenarios where they put the summer between those two numbers.
Yeah, it's the total.
Although, some of those were straight trade in your thing, some of it was straight trade offs, so there's no change in, right? So it would be. Don't do this one position and do two different ones, or so, so some of those were just straight. But then, as you got to the bottom, there were things that, like, we can adjust the health, like healthcare, one is probably. An easy one for us all to decide to bring down. That's our biggest problem, it's a hundred and fifty thousand. From twelve to ten, so those are things that. We can act on and does reduce the number. Some of them were just straight trade offs of decision.
Luke just said, and, and just to be clear too, you know, for the, for the public, coming out of that second workshop back in December. You know, we were all looking at each other, you know, voting ten point three, saying that's, you know, astronomical, because we never had a budget back. So hence the, the push to, you know, to drop that number down and, and, you know, Sarah asked a great question, story of this budget. It is, you know, health insurance, inflation and the issues with that, because that's driving a lot of it. But, you know, a six point nine seven is a very high number, I'm all for, you know, I don't want to cut a single position. But, you know, coming out of that workshop, that was the, you know, kind of the, the discussion as to, you know, how do we bring this down? Hence, that's what we brought, we brought forward, so.
And we are just compared to our, we are at the higher, six point nine seven is at the higher end.
It's a higher end of, yeah, than the other.
What others are asking for, just context setting.
Yeah, so, so no, the point is, we were at the workshops, we were, you know, we were grappling with that number. But I think after having heard. The feedback from the community, from the educators, from teachers, I, I think it's, it's worth for us to have my discussion. But also be realistic, like, if we come up with eight percent, nine percent, whatever it is. How is that going to be received by the world finance, by, you know, like, so. You know, also have contingencies, we would decide to go higher, you know, keep some or all the positions. Knowing that ultimately it's not necessarily gonna be just up to us, that, I just think we should have those conversations as well.
Thanks, Esteban, Bill.
Yeah, I, I, I think that Lee hit it right on. If, if we go line by line, we're still gonna be sitting here having the discussion to put these positions back in. Because that's what I heard last week and that's what I think that this board wants to do is to reinstate. These positions and if we go line by line. Eleven thousand dollars here or there is not gonna be what reinstates those positions, so we're not gonna be able to do it without keeping it at the six point nine. And I'd rather have that conversation while I'm not completely asleep. You know, I'd rather do it sooner than later. I, I do think that going through this page would be helpful for me to, to just make sure. Cause this is, if you look at these things, it's, it's kind of small potatoes, if you look at them on these pages, there's some pretty big numbers that I. Just wanted to get clarified, like, you know, starting at the first line I asked, I needed to understand why was that where it is. Right, I mean. That's a hundred thousand dollars, okay, but it got shifted, okay, now I get it, so it's not really something that. Is jumping in that, in that way, it got moved from here to there and, and so I, I think it's worthwhile to, to go through these. Especially the big ones and see, is there anything and then have the discussion about. What we're gonna put back and, and, uh, Aaron, thank you for clarifying. Eight sounds better than ten. So that's, that's good news.
So, and, and thanks, Bill, so I wanna go to Kate, I also, if we do. Do what Bill is proposing, maybe we can. Do set some kind of tie, like, we'll spend about a half hour or so going through that, so again. To all our points of us being fresh as we start getting to nine o'clock, I know our energy levels generally start to fade, so. Maybe we can spend like a half hour going through and then we can have that discussion with that, okay, Kate.
Well, my point is. The, we, we have care professionals and library assistants and that's eight point eight F T Es on that. And when we look at their salaries. That range from sixteen dollars an hour to twenty three dollars an hour, you know, I think we're just really taking. When I was working as a speech pathologist, I'll tell you what I used to say, I used to say that the instructional assistance, the paraprofessionals. Were my heart and hands when I couldn't be there and I did whatever I could to teach them what I was doing so that they could reinforce. And continue those activities and help it to generalize. And I know when I worked on by contract here in this, in this building, actually. The library assistants were amazing, supportive, so I just really feel like we truly need to be careful with. Any kind of, especially the low hanging fruit, you know, like the sixteen, twenty three dollar an hour employees. It's just that we need to be really careful because they are our heart and hands.
Thanks, Kate. So is everybody okay if we spend? Eight, ten, so like eight thirty, eight forty, spend about twenty minutes, half hour going through, making sure. Cause a few ten thousands here or there adds up to forty, fifty, that, you know, it could make, make a difference if there's something that we see. And then we go to the media discussion about what do we really want to do? And what we propose, that work for a room? Okay, so, Bill, I think you had a few, so why don't we let you start where you had some questions?
So we're in the two hundreds?
We're in the two hundreds.
Okay, yeah, so one that wasn't an increase, but I don't understand what it is, is the retirement severance, which is.
That's the payment for, in the teacher's contract when a teacher retires. Depending on, I think it is. They were hired for two thousand and eighteen or nineteen or, because they, they get. Paid out half of their sick days up to eighty seven and a half days. So, and it's spread out over four years, so there's, you know, we're, we're paying now people that have retired. So in twenty three, twenty four, we would be paying in when that obviously is retiring this year. They had any accumulated sick time and then. So it's twenty three, twenty four, so from twenty twenty, twenty one, twenty two, those people.
So, so th- these are people that were still paying that have already retired, so this is an obligation that. And are there any people that we know of that are retiring this year that would be?
And that's included.
Okay.
Because some people fall off and then some people.
But this is an estimate still, it's, it's pretty, it's right.
What I knew at the time.
Okay.
That I did on the budget and who had retired, I'm not sure we have anyone else that said anything after that, but let they, someone. Decides in May to retire, then obviously I wouldn't have.
So conceivably, we could need more for that, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't have any extra. Cause that's, that's all accounted for.
You have other questions on two hundred, yeah, on two oh one, the health insurance. That we were budgeting for twelve percent, but I see a, a percent change is twenty three percent, so just want a clarification of that.
Um, so because, as you recall, like, part of the reason this year we're at the deficit is we only budgeted, we budgeted five percent increase. And this year's budget of the increase came in at ten and a half, so we're making up. So I have to base next year's budget on the increase of ten and a half, I can't use last year's budget rate. And then we have some additional people coming on, so that also contributed to that twenty three point oh one percent.
Yeah, thank you. And while we're on health insurance, so if we do go from twelve to ten. I remember.
But what does that actually look like? Like, what do you mean you go twelve to?
That's the, that's the savings that we would have by dropping our placeholder percent of twelve percent down to ten percent. As the state is recommending a little bit of a lower, uh, recommended number for health insurance, specifically from the state partnership.
January, January's update was from eight.
It's eight to ten versus nine.
Initially, it was nine, it was right, twelve.
And the town is currently a ten, they're using placeholder as ten percent as well.
And you think it's safe for us to do that?
February, they're coming out with another estimate.
Okay.
And they haven't been great at projecting.
No, well, that's why I'm asking, do you think that it's actually safe to do that or not? Is it better to actually just stay with the twelve percent, so, right?
So they're coming out with another estimate, because as they, they get more claims on experience, then they can invest. Why they got a better claims experience from the last time they gave us that update, so they continue to update that. The final one will be sometime. The final one will be sometime.
Do we have a number of teachers taking advantage of the tuition reimbursement?
We do, we have kind of, that's why you'll see that, um, that's increased. Um, I think, you know, in the previous years with COVID and I don't think we're taking classes to, you know, health concerns and now.
And where are they going, school?
They go online, there's, there's the. Roger, the question, I guess, same question this morning, Mary, I never talked about that as we were looking at it, you know, could be lower that one, but there are more people.
Other questions in the two hundreds?
Is that part of their contract that they have?
Move to the three hundreds?
For the people services, we have four hundred and ninety eight thousand. And then it increased in twenty three. We're saying that those are employees and not contracted.
Yeah, three twenty three are contracted services, so anything in the three hundred series. Could explain to you more specifically once we've moved it in that, but we're looking at three twenty three, those are services that can use.
Can I just ask a question on that same line item? So I go back to the line by line, I don't, I think thirteen is where this one is. So it's, um, extended in twenty twenty two, am I reading, is that the seven ninety eight, the entire line or is that, that page?
That's the three, so that is what was spent in the three to money break.
In twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, yeah.
Cause of what was expended this current.
So, so that is, those are covering, Jamie, um. We had, uh, just positions that we could not fill by advertising and we need to get. So that saving is different, so, so we have a savings in, so last in twenty one, twenty two, there was a savings in our, um, salary line. Then we went over on this line, so the two lines.
Other questions on the three hundred?
Never mind, I'll come back around in five.
Oh, we're on the page.
So I'm going to say field trips, it's on a.
Drop down to twenty nine.
I know.
What are we doing?
Um, so, we. I'm not, I'm not budgeting for that one, these might be some building based field trips that are occurring at the middle school and high school level. All the elementary common assured field trips are paid by the Eastline Public Schools. Uh, we usually use revenue actually to pay for those, is why you don't see it in the operation fund. And the grade level team leaders across the three buildings come together. And plan for those district wide field trips, common assured experiences for kids at the elementary level.
Yeah, this is.
So field trips are, yeah, so my concern is, is that you're cutting them. So what kind of experiences are we taking away from the children with the cut and expenses? I'm not sure, Jeff, if you know exactly what was cut from field trips, you know.
Reduction. So, so one of the, yeah, he, he has outside field experience, he travels to, um, different sites. There's like five experiences, we reduced previous year, it was a large numbers by ten thousand.
But we're not taking experiences away from the elementary kids and high school kids that they've normally gotten.
I think so, are we putting it at? The field trips for the high school are typically handled. Parents, they, those field trips is typically stuff, so in here we have the business end. Department has some funds in there for transportation, so the old friends and the counseling on house. So, but I, so I guess my, what my, my one point is, is where are the elementary, middle school field trips? Why aren't the kids getting the field trips that they've gotten in the past, who's paying for them?
Elementary, the common assured experiences across all three elementaries come out of revenue. We've paid for them past two years out of revenue, we're going to continue to pay for them out of revenue, so we earmarked the money, it's about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. That we use to fund the field trips per grade level, as well as transportation, that's in addition to the project bill contract that we have. Project Joe was also a common assured field experience for elementary, middle and high school students, there's a bow. Ooh, I don't want to pull the number, there are multiple opportunities for students to, um. Uh, go on field experiences through our project bill contract.
It's a forty six thousand dollar cost.
So you're, so that, that is another component I would put out with a field experience.
I'm going to say, I, I get that we've had COVID and field trips were put on hold for three years. But I'm hoping that we're going to be making them up. Or somehow giving the kids the experiences that they missed out on K through three and four through five, seven and.
Because I know that they have missed out on field trips, the kids. We've done a lot of work, I, K four, on field trips over the past two years to sort of bring them back to life. Um, I don't know, Jason, if you want to share a little bit around this.
No, I know, but field trips have been cut significantly over the last couple of years. Speaking as an elementary mom, I know that my kids haven't gone on a field, my daughter hasn't been on a field trip since she started elementary school. So I don't know, and my other two older children went on multiple field trips at elementary and middle school levels. And I guess I'm wondering if we're going to be bringing back the experience for the children that have been missing out on them all these years because now the COVID is over. Or are the kids going to continue to not get the field trip experiences that the other older students have always got?
We're working to strategically, being back post COVID. Um, but we have, as Emily said, you know, we streamlined across the three schools. Um, to have common experiences, I think what, prior to.
Field trips.
Prior to COVID, it was, you know, there was a lot, different schools were doing many different things, so, yeah.
Trying to streamline it, align it to, um, core standards, any issue of grade level, whether it be social studies or science. Um, there are other supplemental opportunities that happen, um, that. And we're move, we're moving away from field trip, um, more to field experience. Because it could be that a group walks over to the giving garden across the street, which is a great community resource that, I mean, I am in center, used to walk over to. The nursing home, it can be folks with the seniors, eat with the seniors, dance with the seniors, but we haven't done that since COVID and I understand why. Um, I know that current third graders, they've never got a beach day because of COVID. Um, K one, two never got beach days because of COVID, I just, each day is back in.
My concern is, is that the kids are missing out on things that their prior generations have had. So I just want, so the cut period just concerns me because I've seen that line item go down and down and down and down every year. So my concern is, is that kids are missing out on experiences that they've heard other kids have done, and it just concerns me. Yeah, and that's.
But maybe that's something at triple A.
And no, that's, we've had plenty of topics, okay, at triple A, I'm just going to continue to say I'm concerned with field trips.
Uh, we're on the four hundreds now, any thoughts or comments on four hundreds?
Projects four thirty seven, what is that?
Cut a lot of, uh, reduced a lot of projects, um, that we are looking to reinstate, things that need to get done. After one is here, in specific, um, about them, um, but it's been a problem the past, continue to cut and push projects. But, you know, we're really working hard to focus on not reducing in those areas, uh, getting these done, and need to get done around our schools.
I understand, so I'm going to hone in a little bit more on what exactly the projects are. And yes, my question would be, is it something that we can hold off on, because I don't know what the projects are, so. I would like to know what they are and if we can hold off on them, because it's a hundred and fifty two thousand.
Chris, you want to talk about, uh, the projects?
I'm on, forgive, object code four thirty seven.
No, I know, but tab A, any kind of object listing definition, kind of explain.
I'm sorry, what?
Tab A defines each of these things a little bit.
No, that, that's, that's capital, that's different, uh, Kate, that's a separate, yeah, this is specific to the operating budget. So there's some, some other smaller projects that we do.
I appreciate you talking about it, if you can, would be great, and if not.
The bigger ticket items, um, so. We moved a bunch of stuff, I'm not sure what one, where, okay, um. And we can always get the rest to Candace, uh, you know, what it was down. It is, yeah, we, we cut a lot of things out, um, the last year, we didn't do them. Um, especially with the deficit this year, we cut a lot of things out that we weren't doing, um, those things now we put into next year's budget. Deficit items, okay.
I appreciate you, I know, I'm kind of going to go on the spot, but I know you can handle it.
So, overall, um, there's a number of small projects that are in here, general requests from the schools. Um, and then just a little bit of project money, uh, in each school, um, nominal amount, just to cover those things that pop up. Along the way, along the lines of some of the larger things, uh, that are in here, uh, money set aside to start looking at the roof that hates. Which I would not prefer that at all, there's my pain there, I think we're already past one, we should have done that. And we're going to see that come up on the capital list very soon thereafter, um. Little bit of money set aside, uh, at Iannic, um, to finish a playground that we started, that we took money out of this year. Uh, again, that's pre K playground and there's nothing left in there that's usable, so, again, I would, we bought some equipment, so. Uh, really that's just taking out the asphalt pavement, repaving it, it's all messed up because the trees that had been there too, so it's a trip hazard, so it's same issue now. So, it's really just paving that and installing the equipment that the PTA bought. So again, I would, I would not defer that, it's not a lot of money. Uh, and for them, I gave them an extra that, for I budget an extra thousand, the bodies that pop up, again, that doesn't go very far. Uh, we're starting to see some of the bigger line items, uh, at middle school, continuing our deep apartment replacements. There's thirty three thousand set aside for that, um.
Is that the occupied keeper or the not occupied keeper?
We would do the occupied one. Uh, I forget which one's next on my list, but just marching along, or, or, they're all. Oh, now we have two done, so. Uh, we put money in for the vehicle shed, uh, we had flyers that we bought to help with all that great summer. And the, uh, security folks bought a, uh, valve guard that they're using, so we need something just to protect those from the elements and. Sometimes, uh, money set aside for the stage lighting, uh, system at middle school. Uh, for some reason it decided to work most recently during the, uh, production that they had. I surprised that, because that worked for that, uh, that's pretty much just electronic components, computers, whatnot. Not the actual lighting, it's just the controlled components of that. Here at the high school, us. One, two, three, four carpet, three carpet projects, uh, just offices continuing where we've been working through. Uh, this would be the rest of the main office, uh, the rest of the guidance suite. And, uh, carpet and A one twenty two, uh, combine that, uh, pulls up to. Yeah, I remember this. Okay, so, yeah, so, the number, yeah, number of these projects, uh, moved over. Cut or moved to acquisition.
Right.
So this is, unfortunately, I'm talking about what everything is originally on there.
We made about, we cut about forty seven thousand five hundred from the original.
Yeah.
I got it, so, just like right off the bat, so some of the, some of the questions that I have right there. So I know its needs and wants and all, and we were just nitpicking, to be honest with you, but I get it. But even in my own personal home, I would put certain things off because I have to do this or I have to do that, and I'm sure that I'm like everyone else. Is it something that we have to do? Can we put it off? Can we utilize some of that money towards what we need it for now? Another great example would be the vehicle that was purchased, that, again, I had brought up that we shouldn't buy. No, I know that it's not, but it went through and it was sixty five thousand dollars that we could have utilized. So some people think, well, sixty five thousand dollars out of that amount of money really isn't that big of a deal, but it kind of is, right? Because it's a teacher or maybe a parent or two, or it actually does add up, so. From out of the, out of, out of the projects, is there something, the bigger ticketed items, can you add them to the capital improvement? And then hold off on the rest, is that an option or not? Cause I'm just going to circle it, because I think.
So, I would say a couple of answers to those questions, first of all, I think. Uh, pretty much everything fine on this list are things that somebody else kicked down the road already. So, depends, you know, the answer to that is always how far do you want to get the camp?
Sure.
Um, there are things, carpet, you can walk with that carpet, you can never remove this carpet. Um, it's all tears up, you have to worry about some ripping on it, I mean, that's always an option. It gets unsightly and those types of things, um, just like pay and everything else do contribute to the playground as well.
Sure.
Nobody wants to work in the facility that looks poorly maintained or run down or whatnot, so. I mean, all those things are interwoven and intertwined.
Sure.
So, that would be one answer to it is, there are certainly things there that could be put off, it's just, you want to kick it down. Now, there are certain things too that have been pushed off that, um, show up here and elsewhere that have been pushed too far.
Right.
Um, I would say carpet, because again, you can walk on carpet, literally trip over. Uh, but there are other things that, that definitely need to be done, or should have been done five or ten years ago already. Those are, I'm trying to catch up on now, and as I told Jeff, uh, the only thing holding me back from spending more money is more. Yeah, we could double, so this budget across easily with work that needs to be done.
Sure.
But we just don't have the capacity there, and, and that is one of the things that keeps me up at night is what is going to let go before we have a chance.
Sure.
And it's going to come eventually, we passed a couple of finer ones, but.
Sure.
Things that were in here, the, things on the roof and the roofs. You know, the cold weather on Friday, yeah.
I know, yeah, understandable.
So there's always some things, just at the board, you have to decide, I, I give you my best.
And you always do, and I thank you for your honesty, I do.
So, sorry.
Thank you.
The list that you provided, is this, um, like a prioritized list that is, we have having budget proposed against it? Or is instead of one less, like, thing that's new, or not looking at enough of the budget for?
The product list that I was, assuming it's the same as you, it's not in party where it's just by school and, and whatnot.
No, no, I mean, like, if you're looking at the entire list and pulling out, cause whatever the object is, is that, uh, reminded of. Everything we have wanted to do, machine lock.
No, the, the project, the on and project list, unlike C I B list, which you're trying to project ten years out. Is I have a, add this year and that sort of next year in mind.
So we're seeing what, you know, we're seeing is the.
You're seeing this series plus minus, like I said, what I have in mind next year, but those tend to change quite a bit.
So being that the roof is like one of the bigger ticket, is that something conceivable that could go on to the capital improvement or no?
Oh, it, it is, what's in there, part about the roof is the study, that would be.
Okay.
And since it's only studied, it's five K, it does comprise the level of what.
Okay, so it's not the actual roof that you're talking about, it's the, okay.
There's a twenty five thousand dollar threshold for any under that, any over that usually goes to capital and any under that is supposed to be, you know, out of our.
And except, the, except for that being, um, recurring maintenance items, like, you don't typically see painting.
Right.
Carpet.
No.
That's considered a recurring.
Right.
Appreciate you jumping in.
Regards line item four forty in the rental budget. And it is going up. In the maintenance budget for like just so short. Even after the purchase of that, so.
And that's, that's the placeholder, because I also put a truck in the acquisition plan, so we get the purchase and the acquisition plan.
So are we, is this a full time rental, like? So we may not have to pay for that, it may come something may. Okay, maybe something that falls off. Okay, and that that price is based on how many times you have the rent in during the season or?
It's based on the rental for the season, because those types of trucks like we're doing right now, you have friends for at least a month at a time.
Where does one rent those?
We got those from a. Or North Haven, they deal with fleet rentals and heavy equipment rentals.
Sure, there aren't a lot of them. Thank you.
Other questions?
I gotta say it every year. All right, so we got one to one devices, everyone in the school, we got Google Docs, and yet our copy costs are up eleven percent. How is that possible? That's.
Well, side of those paper too, because we start saving on. Paper, but it's still being used in an awful lot.
I mean, I I understand that, I don't want to take all the paper from teachers, but it just seemed to me that just seems, I I don't. Think it's kind of crazy.
It's. On paper, a lot of packets, there's a lot of packets that we found that have been, are being created as well for. You know, many grade levels.
Times to be an area where we print, which makes sense. We we have with our new management system, we do have the capacity to track, so. You know, where we're working, not looking at patterns and trends.
We we do have in place the the fobs, nothing releases off of a printer now, so you go up to it and you swipe your badge and then it releases. For the past, we didn't have that, so I don't know, we maybe as we move forward, we might start to see some savings in that capacity, but that was implemented this year.
Didn't we previously have a printing company or facility or somehow there were. Like a lot of printing being done, it wasn't done on the coffee machine, it was done.
Yeah, so does like, you know, the Viking Saga, for instance, you know, actually we calculate, it's a great thing to have, you know, we love it. We calculated that out, I can't remember the number, but it's, it's, it was upwards of almost ten thousand dollars, I think, for the year to print the Viking Saga. And again, I'm not saying, you know, we get, we get rid of it, make it digital, but these are the things that, you know, we we like to have at our disposal. Yeah, everybody does, the kids do a great job with it, you know, and they produce. Yeah, exactly, but you know, there's, there's an associated cost to that.
I, I, maybe we can incentivize, you know. Printing the right amount, how many Viking Sagas? No, I'm not saying the Viking Saga specifically, but I know as a teacher, I'll go make copies for a class and I'll be like, oh, twenty. And oh, that class was only fifteen, or I I don't, I just. We waste a lot of paper, I do, there's got to be a way to save a little bit of of the paper. It's good for the planet, good for the budget.
But just to do a a process check, we're about a half hour in.
All right, sorry.
So. Why don't we try to, are there some other big items that we want to touch upon, because I do want to get to the. Meaty question. As we continue down the page, transportation, communication services, tuition.
So we're not, we think that's my postage and I'm actually, that's gonna, we have our update, I just. Just had a meeting today and we're moving forward with. Virtual card payment slash A C H payment, so I'm working with a vendor now, so they'll reach out. To many of our vendors, they'll take what's called a virtual card that will cause decrease. On the cost of mailings and then also if they don't take the virtual card, it'll be through A C H, so we'll still have the mail checks. But it will reduce the number, and I also don't know that we're doing. With the advent of the pandemic, I think a lot more correspondence has been going out digitally, so we're not mailing as much either, so.
I E Ps, for instance, reports that are generated for students, many of them are sent electronically now signed off.
Although they do have to fix the glitches, there's a tremendous amount of glitches.
C T says, there's still some glitches.
A huge work in progress. It doesn't, um, can we just go back to the whole transportation thing and get scolded back, so you've got fifty eight thousand dollars? That's up for public transport, public schools, so is that just because buses are more, more?
So it's actually, it should be a little bit higher, our contract contractual increase was four percent, but then. That total transportation line also includes externally placed transportation, so there's a whole decrease of approximately like thirty thousand in the internally. Like so, in overall, our first student contract was up four percent. Then there's some decreases in some of the other.
Okay.
Transportation line that aren't for students, so the net is about.
I was gonna ask you, when's the contract up for them?
The contract, we have so twenty three, twenty four, twenty four, twenty five.
And then you, oh gosh, so the athletics, that's two thousand six hundred eighty five, that's to and fro. Events, right?
Events and sometimes depending on where they practice.
Transportation supplies and fuel.
So our fuel cost went up. Working with, we we get it from the town, so Joe actually locked in on a great. Uh, director of public works, but it's still.
Yeah, and it's high on his budget too.
Other questions on page two?
I think I already know the answer to this because I asked it last time. But just want to double check, the six forty one line item, the increase there is our program. That's K four, K five.
If that, that line item district wide textbooks.
Yeah.
Correct, yes, it's a beautiful textbook.
Yeah, but, yeah.
And the mandate is K three, but we're.
We're in a pilot right now, so. We're moving in that direction, but we can certainly pivot. Do they offer like multi-year? I'm sure you explore that. Yeah, so depending on the, you know, the vendor that you go with, they do offer multi-year contracts, a vendor we're, we're. Working at right now, this is a five-year contract with two payments in the first two years.
And there's reimbursement that's coming, or there's some sort of funding that is supposed to be coming. But we just don't know how much.
Funding available at two years of funding. And, you know, my sources tell me that there'll be some access to that by districts who are moving forward with one of the. Proposed programs.
If we were to do the K through three and then additionally add in afterwards. Up to five. What would that look like?
Uh, in terms of funding or just?
Because this money is earmarked for it, right? We could be getting money that comes in. To offset, so we could have this money to utilize in another direction if we needed to be.
Yeah.
But I don't know.
But we just don't know. No, I understand that.
Larger portion would be great.
Um, because included in this budget is also some professional development associated with that.
And it's needed.
So that there could be some offset of funding there, so I suspect that. The funding, that the funding that would be accessible to us would be both for drunk and supplies and professional.
Okay. I just wanted to ask on it, thank you.
Six ninety four line item.
Software.
Yep, sorry. Uh, sixteen point nine one percent of.
So the story behind the instructional software is I made an oversellist attempt to cut. In this act, this year, and wasn't able to make up for it, so sixteen percent is that difference that I wasn't able, thought I could cut back. I made a projection, I was off, and so I needed to include. Uh, that additional sixteen percent to offer the instructional software programming that. Um, we've agreed as a district are essential to instruction in the classroom.
This was a cut that was made in last budget that we just shouldn't have made, so we're trying to make up for it.
Well, yeah, I mean, I projected it, just not necessarily. Knowing exactly where it was going to fall in terms of licensing. Um, we did save a significant amount of funds with that being said, but I did, it's an increase from last year's budget budget. Because I had to add a little bit more, just because I did transfer some funds this year to offset an an increase in that line this year. So, but that includes any sort of instructional program or assessment that we utilize. In elementary middle school, and then there's also an increase on the back end, so not only for anyone, but there's the backend software. There was, we budgeted last year, we, there was about a fifty thousand dollar. Software that we didn't think we would necessarily need, so. An increase there in addition to just increasing the cost for, you know, projecting.
Any final questions on this part of our discussion? We can always come back, you know, we have other meetings, so if you see stuff, email Jeff, you know, we can get, you know, and dig in if there's anything specific. But I think it is important, they did prior to knowing you have twelve minutes of. To get to the the meat of, I think, of Lee's question, so, you know, I think as we went through this. We had some questions and there might be. Some tens of thousands of dollars that that maybe, maybe there's a little more than ten thousand dollars, but there's not. You know, there's, I don't think we saw, maybe others, you know, I don't think there's a million dollars, I don't think there's. You know, anything in that neighborhood, which is the delta from the six nine seven to eight nine eight. Um, eight nine eight is. Right, eight nine eight, eight nine eight, so it'd be the two percent is about five hundred thousand per percent probably. So.
No, I just, just to be clear to Mariana with the, that you said that is certified staff.
It's so what, what I.
I just want to make sure we have a clear picture of what that.
And so I just took this out, so in. In the, one of the worksheets that I had, we had, I broke it out between salary reductions, salary and benefit reductions. And then school department reduction, so. Um, within that top half, it included the cuts that we were talking about. Uh, the point seven proposed, go another one point oh. Um, that was in the four empty for elementary one. It does include part-time salary reduction, which I think probably we leave that reduction in there.
Yeah.
So again, so that's that, the the three point eight library is.
Okay, so it's all of the, all right, that's why I just wanted clarity on, it was the whole, we're leaving a group off, you know, to make up that money, okay, all right.
Are are we moving on to the next part of this? My first question is of all of the people represented in that eighteen and a half. Are there any? Retirements that are happening that offset any of that, that don't. Increase class size, in other words, do we need to reinstate? All of them, if we want to keep, i- if if we don't want anyone to lose their job and we want class sizes to stay the same.
That's part of what's beating us up, because we don't have a lot of attrition, we're like six or seven retirees, there's one elementary retiree. I I take it back, two, but one is in a classroom, a classroom setting, the other one is in a special area, special area. Um, so to answer your question, it's not helping, no.
So there's, so with that being said, is it okay for me to make a motion to reinstate all of those?
Well, yeah, it's not. This is just discussion.
Discussion, okay.
We wouldn't, so in terms of process, we have potentially another meeting next. Twenty seven is our.
Final discussions and then.
And then we we would vote after that, because we still want to hear, I mean, we've obviously had a chance to hear, but the public hearing is also a chance to hear from the public as well as we are.
Okay.
On tuning where we're ending up and what we're thinking about, so we can get feedback in that session as well. So now it's trying to.
So now it's like, okay, so the bottom line is we have no room to move.
So maybe in. So the question, Jeff, is maybe, are there any? I think as you go through, are there any, any of those roles that? Isn't a person associated with the role?
Or even if it is, though, I'd like to know whether how it affect affects. Class size as well.
Class size and, but I thought with with some, we're generally in a hiring pattern with errors every year.
We we are, yes, yep.
That we're always looking, so it would be high, potentially hiring less, as I understand, that would we still be in a hiring mode?
Yeah, and the turnover in that area is always vast. Um, now, you know, we we do have, you know, as of right now, there's three students that are moving out of district. That require, you know, some some services, that potentially we could say, you know what, we're, we're not going to fill, you know, those positions. We don't know what's going to move in, though, in the next five, six, seven months, that's the only question. That's the wild card.
Tomorrow.
Exactly, that's the wild card with with all of that. But, you know, we, we have some contracted paras right now, which are costing us more money, but we we needed to do that because we couldn't find people. We're doing, getting better at finding people for positions, but we need to eliminate those contract positions, because they're they're much costier. Uh, so that's parties as well.
Okay. Um. I would like to at future meetings, dig into the details a little bit of some of the, I want to keep the camp on the road, need more of some of the facilities project. Maybe get like a staff ranking list to be, would be helpful and she can talk through the health insurance piece. We want to keep it at twelve percent or drop it to ten, all that aside, I mean. I would really like to see us work, move to reinstate all the eighteen point five positions, unless there are some. Circumstances around, you know, a retirement or something of that nature, but. Maybe it's because they've been a little head down in some of the triple A culture and climate work that I keep. Like as everyone was speaking tonight, I kept coming back to us looking at that data and the question around, there is an adult in this school, who cares about?
Right, right.
And I can't say it any better than all the folks who spoke tonight, students, teachers, families, I think. We've never been in this position before as a district, I understand that this is unprecedented, I don't take. The fiscal responsibility aspect of it lightly, and in our job to do right by our kids and our district. I can't get behind cutting those positions, they they are all incredibly essential and I forget who said it, but. I do feel that if we eliminate those now, we are going to.
And we'll never get some back. We'll never get them back. Yes, I would agree. I'm hesitant on the insurance piece until we get some more information, to be honest with you, because. I'm hesitant on the insurance piece until we get some more information, to be honest with you, because I do think that, but it's risky. So I just don't know how risky I want to be with that, um, but I, I think that we'll have a good feel for it, um. I asked about the projects for a reason, because, uh, you know, even in my own budget, there are certain things that I'll choose to do, and then. There are certain things that we'll choose to wait on, it just depends, it depends on what's going on and, you know, everybody is being hit with. Just life in general, that costs more and all of these different things, um. When you look at what is being projected or being put out to eliminate. Really what the cost of that is going to look like, so I feel like I invest. And we talked about this, we've talked about this over and over, but what we prioritize as a district, we talk about educating the whole child. We talk about the portrait of a graduate and what we want to see in our students at the end with success, whatever they measure. And all of these things, from the moment we saw this list or the moment that I saw this list, it just. It spoke to me as very impactful on students and the very people. That need those services the most, so we all have lots of different hats, lots of different roles. I'm a caseworker for the state of Connecticut, um, I see waste all the time. And, and, and it's not in a good way. Um. At all, and when you talk about. Funding and money and allotting money to your most vulnerable students, uh, but at the state level, the most vulnerable. And you have it top heavy. I've said it over and over. I can find you a million dollars, give me a highlighter and a budget, that's right off the top. Because some of those positions could go. They could go. In a municipality, in this, that's very different. That's very, very different, and I've heard that resonate here in the community from, from folks. In regards to administration, and I don't think that people realize really what it takes. To educate children in the twenty first century, I don't think that they do. And there is an unfairness, I think, to it, and in a, a shock as far as how much it actually costs. And the expectations, unreasonable expectations. That are put on school districts and that's put on administration, that's put on teachers, um. Their plates are very full with things that probably shouldn't be there, but they are. And the good ones, they rise to the occasion, and we have some really incredible people here in this district. And I'm not just saying it because I'm here at the table, you've heard me say it a million times, so. So, I'd like to continue with kind of giving our district what it needs to progress and to provide the. The services that we're known for and that we take to heart, um, and some of these things just, that's not it. And some of the. Other options that were put out to kind of scream like, geez, you know, if we, if we have to cut something. And there are going to be people that may not like that I'm going to say it, it's not personal, but if I look at a project. Yeah, I'm gonna go with something that isn't going to directly affect students or teachers first. That's that, I mean, it's not that I want to do that, but if I have to look at savings in that fashion, that's what I'm going to do. Just like in the state level, I would look at cutting something that is not going to direct. That vulnerable people and or the services that they receive. So in that aspect, it's the frontline people, in this aspect, it's you. So I'm willing to. Re-look at, take these off, go with a higher percentage rate. I know that that's not what I want to do. I know that that's what people don't want to do, I know. But I also know that. How could I cut something that I know that we need for our students, I can't get behind it?
Or by saying, um, that if, if our finance doesn't hear from us. They, they won't, they won't hear it, they won't hear about those eighteen point five. We've seen an exceptional level of engagement from our community, we've heard from all levels, right, um. Top down, bottom up, and, um, and I think. I mean, was Lee said, you know, the, the impact is what will be. You know, like these numbers probably are, are a fraction of what the impact would, you know, would be, if you lost, um. We're, we are going in with a unprecedentedly high number, but the others, I mean. It's high without looking at some of them, you know, most, um, the highest priority pieces of the budget.
Uh, did someone else?
No, no, I, I just, um, yeah, I just, to recap in my mind, we went through all this, basically what we found is we could. Go on a less conservative estimate for our insurance, save a few bucks, we could kick a couple things down the road, save a few bucks. It's still not that significant, what we know is that, um. We really need these people. These positions back, and, and Lee, as you know, we're, we're, we're working on a committee that, that's trying to improve. Climate and culture, and prior to this budget even coming out and the, any talk of any positions, I feel as though. Um, the morale needs a boost, needed a boost prior to this, so if, you know, I, I think that. Um, and I strongly believe that climate and culture is hugely impacted by morale, and when morale dips. As, as people said, th- this wonderful school system we have, that would be the spiral that we don't want to see. So, um. You know, I kept going back and started looking, how much is, uh, is East Lime spending per pupil? In comparison, and I know that on other meetings, we've talked about the fact that we are scoring above our. Durg in many cases and spending less, well, it might be time that we. Spend closer to what we need to spend in order to maintain that and, and get the morale. Um, so.
Thanks, Bill. So I just want to make sure everybody has a chance, so, uh, Esteban. Hey, and Laura, I don't think we've heard on this piece, so Laura will come to you last, only because. Make sure the tech, you're ready and that the technology will work, um, I don't, yeah, I spotted.
No, I just definitely, uh, I'm in agreement that we definitely look into, uh. Uh, restating some of these proposed cuts, I would also, for like the next week, the conversation would be to look. Especially for the certified staff of the limited level, look at the class sizes, because I do see a different projection based on enrollment and. Some of the classes are potentially below our, you know, like numbers below, so we definitely need to find two in that if we want to. Put back or four or three or whatever, like, sure that we have, and I don't know how accurate, I mean, I'm assuming the projections are fairly accurate. I don't know how they've been in the past, but definitely, I would like to look into detail, uh, for that next time, uh, I've seen like one. You know, like, one, you know, we just got one, uh, kindergarten teacher. Um, but keep sure, keep, we'll keep three kindergarten teachers in Flanders next year, I mean, that the average class is will be ten, so that'll be way below like. Our guidelines, so definitely we would need to find in that, uh, for the next meeting.
Great, thanks.
I usually think her was what my fellow board members have said, it's just, it's a tough budget time, I know you guys. And they've done a beautiful job with reviewing what the budget is, giving us all kinds of detail, being transparent, I appreciate that, I appreciate. Our parent professionals and teachers and faculty who have come and presented to us, they're. In the grips of it, on a daily basis, and of course, what we want is what is best for our kids, to continue the legacy of. Quality education, because that's what my kids have, and that's what we want for this next generation of students and learners, so. It's just a tough time, and I really appreciate the hard work that everyone is doing. And, you know, some people, I think, think we get paid for this job, because it's, it's a volunteer job, so. So, you get paid.
Yeah.
But it, it's tough, and we're doing it, and we're trying to be judicious, I think, and as responsibly responsible as we possibly can. And keeping in mind the prizes, the students and our faculty and our administrators too, because. I know you probably lose sleep over this, since you don't take your job, uh, lightly, I know all of you are very. Careful and thoughtful and, and problem solvers and trying to do the best for what we can do with what we have.
It's great, thanks, Kate. Laura. You're still on mute, if you're gonna.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, wow. Well, you know, I'm sitting, listening to all of this and really thinking. More about the process that we've used, and as Kate said, when people, you know, say you're on a board event. You know, with the way the media presents boards of ads, we need to be presented to the media as a board event that collaborates. Seeks consensus, listens to various ideas, and really works for the best of our students and our community. And this is what I've seen tonight, and i- it's just awesome to watch, so thank you all.
Great, thank you, Laura, I appreciate it. So, let me see if I can sum up a couple, so, you know, if we think about what do we want for next week, next week. Is a special meeting, so it would just be bucket.
Uh, yeah, exactly, whatever, just, it's, it's a planned special meeting.
So, um. For that meeting, I heard, I think, a few things, one is, um, the project, just a list of the projects and what those are. And maybe some prioritization, the cost, some prioritization, um, two is. What are the class sizes? If we add back, um, what, what is, what are the class sizes look? Um, and for each of the elementary schools, um, if we add everything back, um, just so we can take a look at that. Have one other. No others, was it there? Was there anything else someone wanted to dig? Um, on the administrative, I think we wanted a, a list of what falls into that one oh one. It, it ministry, just what the roles are that fill in that, um, administrative. Those were three things that I had heard, is there anything else?
Can I do one?
Yeah.
Addition to the, uh, class sizes. I know that the numbers that are reflected in what we have, at least for K enrollment, are families that have already enrolled. I'd also be curious to know what percentage of families enroll. In February, so that's the end of the school year, because I feel like we've had a few cycles now where we make decisions off of enrollment numbers.
Yep.
Not realizing that a lot of families wait to enroll.
Right, great point.
Yeah, I think I just want to caveat on that, because historically, um, it is late. It, our, our numbers usually go up, um, right at the end, and actually that week into school, believe it or not, so. Um, that's a great point, and.
There's a lot of construction in town.
Yes, sir.
Oh, there's, there's a lot.
Anything else?
Um, I'm just gonna add on the whole, then you think, if you can, um, accommodate in another fashion, I think that it would be nice for everyone to be in the same room. If you can do it, whether it not be in the auditorium, the town hall might be an option. Um, I just wanted to put it out there, also, the coffee talks, are we going to be doing anything like that?
Well, that was planned for next Monday night, but I think we've had so many people that have been part of this, I don't know, uh, you know. So we're changing and shifting that meeting to a, a regular special meeting for continued discussions, but I'm open to, you know.
So my question is, does it have to be this type of forum, um, and I, I ask for like more of a Q and A type of. Moment or, um, and, and we've done one, at least I think we have, uh, back when we were. Having discussions over the elementary schools, um, I thought that actually we had one here, I just don't know how it could look and. Legality wise, it might be. It's nice to have conversations with people, when people come in, um, versus. This type of setup.
Yeah, so it might be useful. The board wants to pull another. One of those together, maybe now in twenty seven, um, we can, uh, we can do so.
Cause remember, we have, the February break is, it's sort of following, yeah, that's, that's following Monday, whatever, just.
And actually, Lee, Lee had brought up, Lee had brought up a mention of a Zoom option, she had mentioned that a couple of meetings back. Which was also another, you know, thought. But to gather more information would be great.
Is there any way we can have? A discussion. I think we need some time, but, and I'll, I'll probably way underestimate it, but if we had an. Kind of like an hour of time and then had coffee talk immediately following.
That's an option.
You, you, you could, you can do that next Monday, yeah, as you're running, yeah, you're running out of time.
Well, yeah, that's my concern, especially with the February break, it kind of makes it where. It seems like we have two weeks, but we only really have a, a shorter.
Thanks, we could, you've really kind of honed in tonight, which is.
Yeah.
Good on your thoughts, um, so maybe you, you do want some final reflections, bring back, we can look at these final five, four, five items. Um, and then for an hour, and then turn it into, you know, we could leave this space, going to the, uh, cut, we use, we use the commons out here at one corner. We are turning just with one mic and two mics or whatever, and have some open dialogue, we just need to post that as a separate meeting.
So we'd have the special meeting.
Special meeting, and then you'd have another meeting, yeah. Meeting the whole, we just figure out what we want to call it, we definitely want to post it, though.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And so. Be interested in feedback, if we do. Our special meeting and then a coffee talk, in terms of public comment before our special meeting. My only question, and I, I want to hear from everyone, we'll hear, could hear after my own, if. If we're trying to make it an hour. I'm just trying to be, I like, we, it was, by the time we get technology and everybody, it, we, it's forty five minutes an hour. From public comment, which we do want to hear, I don't want to, I, I don't want to stop that, I just don't know how to manage that. And try to do both in one night, so I'm just trying to kind of understand logistics.
How to reverse them and do a coffee talk first, to allow for conversation and then roll into the meeting based on additional. Thoughts and things that you're hearing.
I like that idea, I just don't know, um, legality wise, if it's okay as far as all of.
Yeah, we just need to post it as a, yeah.
So I'm absolutely.
Yeah, we give the public really a chance to, us to dialogue and.
It's the dialogue, it's, that's what I like, that's why.
Hesitation is, I feel like maybe folks are gonna want to engage on what's covered in the meeting, but. I, I'm being, I'm being, I think, I think it makes them.
Let's talk about it, because we all could have also public comments at the end. You could, you could, which we, which we could do coffee talk, air meeting, public comment at the end. Recognize it maybe another night, late night, um, for everyone, but that is another opportunity to give a, another chance after we talk. If there's anybody who wants to.
I think it's a great opportunity, I, I'm in.
I think that. The number of people who would want to speak after they had a chance to talk to us prior to the meeting is going to be significantly less.
Yeah, sure.
And I, I also think that the number of people who want to speak, depending if, if the tone continues as it is tonight, I don't think. People are going to be all that. You know, unless we're drawing a different crowd that says, whoa, 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 we had it right the first time, I don't think that's the case.
We'll get overtime, okay?
Yes, yeah, they're gonna double your. Um, so Jeff, let's talk through logistics, how to make that all happen, but I think that might be coffee talk, meeting. And at the end of the meeting, public comment, rather than at the beginning of the meeting. Okay.
Okay, are you talking about the twenty seventh?
No, uh, we're talking about the thirteenth.
Okay.
Next Monday, yeah.
Okay, because I can't do the thirteenth, but I will be there on the twenty seventh.
Okay, no problem, thanks, thanks, Laura. So, uh, there is more, man, so before we completely close this topic, um. You know, Mariana, Chris, Kim, like we grilled you on some numbers, and I appreciate, it really is appreciated. you know, Mariana, Chris, Kim, like we grilled you on some numbers and I appreciate, it really is appreciated how quickly you were able to come up with numbers and answer like you didn't prepare you for the questions that we were gonna have, so that you were able to answer those. Really helpful that we can make progress. So I appreciate that you were able to do that. Okay. Where are we? Okay, so that's. Let's just take, actually, let's just take thirty seconds.
I suggest possibly scheduling a calendar for another night because we have all the policy.
I guess what I was originally planning, when I think.
We look, it's we can, it's up to you. It's just, it's getting late. You're getting, you're talking into March now by the time, because there's not another meeting. Unless you add a special meeting for next week, but I don't know if you want to do.
Let's just get it done. Let's just get it done. Let's just get it done. Shame on you. I don't normally.
I know, but I know.
I know. Pretty simplistic. There's nothing. Let's see what we can, we can do. Okay, next discussion action item, we have the board committee list that we had done through most of it. We had the one section that we updated.
Can I just just send the administrators home?
Thanks, everybody.
No, no, no.
Scott, you have to stay though.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't know.
I don't think so.
Probably should have some coffee, but then I was not.
No, we won't sleep.
For a week and a half if I had it now. Okay, we're on the committee and liaison list. And we adjusted back. I think this now reflects what we had discussed, any thoughts or further comment? We had actually approved everything except the personal policy committee, personnel policy committees. I need a motion.
I think to make a motion that we approved the CUDI assignments of.
I would second.
Oh, and further.
Oh, I second that then.
Further comment? All those in favor, say aye. Same. And Laura, did you, I wasn't watching you. Did you thumbs up? Or approve? Good, thank you. Okay, we move to the the calendar, discussion action, I am instructional, moving to the calendar for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year.
Yeah, we went through this. There's, there's no real adjustments. The only thing that we did the adjustment this year was adding an additional half day for elementary staff for parent teacher conferences in March. So that's reflected in next year's calendar, say that's on the twentieth of March.
That's.
Snowflake days in PD moved around a little bit based off of, that's the only caveat with this calendar is the the primary this next year. We have right now, we're told it's supposed to be April thirtieth. That's why we see a more ED day on the thirtieth. That could shift or change. I hope it doesn't, but it's not locked in yet. The town, the state, so we're waiting for a lot of work, but that's, that's the day we've been getting. So that's really the only caveat of this. We get out on the thirteenth, starting school the same basically as we did this year. So that's really it.
I make a motion to approve that the fellow's calendar.
March twenty ninth is obviously the Friday. That's why the day is off. So we have the Friday off and then a week of school and then April vacation. As opposed to how we've normally done it, where we have good Friday and then we have April vacation.
Friday's a little wacky next year.
I mean, I don't know historically, historically how we've done it, but this is how the learned calendar has been before. So we based it off of the learned calendar.
Yeah, so that means most every other district around is using that week. So we try and switch off.
I asked the questions. And then my second question concern asked is because I heard a lot of parents complain about it is the Friday off, the first week of school, instead of having like school start on Wednesday, then do school Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Parents complain about going to school Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday off. Like, I've heard that no one understands why we do it, and it doesn't make any sense to have the kids, no, no school Mondays, school Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then no school Friday. They they have school on Monday this time. The purple is actually March, the first day of school.
So they go four days.
That does make a little bit more sense, I guess, but.
Yeah, so it's four days and then four days. It was always that ease back into.
Okay, so starts to starts Monday.
Goes Monday through Thursday, Friday off for, okay, well, that makes more sense.
That makes more sense in years in past. I just didn't read that wrong. Now I'm gonna do my usual. Why do we have the time off for Thanksgiving break? A whole week or almost a whole week and then all happening. The same thing I always complain about because parents were, parents made it time off. I know schools got daycare, but.
Yeah, and it's a trial we did this year with the parent teacher conferences, you know, before the Thanksgiving break. And it's already, we received a lot of, brought it to pack, our parent advisory council talked about it, a lot of positive feedback about how it worked this year, but I know there's differing opinions, shame. Everybody differently, you know.
What I hear.
Yeah, yeah. I haven't heard a lot of negative press. I mean, this, the staff too, we, we asked PDAC. The staff seemed to think that worked well this year.
Yeah, I mean, it was, I would say the majority of the feedback was positive. One of the pieces that especially at the elementary, early middle school was the transition back to school because it is a long, another long break. But because you take the conference days out of December, they said that they had a much more productive December this year than they've had in the past. So, you know, it's, 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 there were pros and cons, but most of the feedback was really positive. So we did talk about putting, putting some things into place to help support kids, like what do we do to support kids when they have long breaks off from school to help them transition back? So that was a conversation that PDAC did have in terms of just work that we need to do as a district.
Can I ask about the half day on December twenty second? Considering it's a Friday, first things is we tell Monday.
We typically always, no matter where it falls, we've always had a half day the last day before the holiday break. And we usually let.
Because I know I'll be asked and I.
Yeah, it's, it's always been a half day.
I encourage those people who are asking you if they could come into the school building on that day. See what it's like.
It's like if the engagement is that because it's a half day of school. Because what Aiden used to go the whole day of school the day before Thanksgiving.
Well, remember the high schools doing their.
If he used to go from a full day of school before holiday to a half day of school before holiday and the transition to go school the day before holiday. Over my years here, I've noticed this trend and I guess I don't know if it is a student engagement, is it parent engagement?
Well, I will tell you that the, the reason why we shifted conferences to this timeframe is it actually aligns better with our trimesters. That was one of the driving reasons. It wasn't really to extend the break, although we were kind of wondering like, how would people respond to that? Some families who have, as kids get older and they're playing winter sports, the only break that a student might have is that Thanksgiving break before fall season and a winter season. So, you know, we thought that, and I, I have no statistical or survey data on this, but you know, just speaking from experience, it's an opportunity for families to escape for a few days while not interrupting school or athletic schedules. So those are just sort of the other, other. I have not heard anything, so please, you know, encourage folks to email me, call me. Information to the.
Where they quarter you in the grocery store or the game and they tell you and then I go, come, tell other people. So it's not just me. And they go, so it just becomes me, sound like the hobby and I'm not.
And then the half days I'll advocate for. I know it could be hard on working families. I get it from a parent's perspective too. I've lived it one hundred percent. It is absolutely an inconvenience to families, but we would not have moved forward with our restorative practice professional development as successfully as we could this year. Or our high, high impact teaching initiatives through our instructional focus area without those half days. We have absolutely maximized that time for professional learning and we have benefited as a result of that. So I promise you, as assistant superintendent of curriculum instruction assessment, we will make sure that those days are planned to their fullest extent and are meaningful and tied to district initiatives.
I make a motion to approve.
With the half days, I'm, I'm gonna support the calendar, but with the half days, I know a lot of families really rely on the before and after. My one plug is maybe around the half days. If you don't, I think, register like a month. It's a long window, like drop in days, has to be like two weeks in advance, which is really tough to anticipate when you're gonna need a drop in day. Right, so maybe there's a great period that we discuss.
We, in my last board update, I had included that we're looking at centralizing here.
I know. I'm not gonna ask about it tonight, but.
About it, but that would be a benefit of centralizing because we know, we would know we would have the staff and capacity to manage additional students. Okay. I support that thought a hundred and fifty percent. When my kids were in elementary school, it was there, you could do that. You could be like, oh, I have to work late. Can, can such, you know, can he stay after it and you just pay your cash and you'd be good? It doesn't happen anymore.
All over in favor.
Oh, Jamie's got a hand up. There's something special that comes out when it gets late. There's something special that comes out when we get late.
A post. Say, okay, calendar.
Yeah, no, I just want, yeah, I just want to make a comment though, and I just, this is trying to improve morale and and all of that. Our district on that half day before Christmas break. We are supposed to have PD. What they did for our staff is we are required to do, you know, seems like forty hours of safe school videos. That get logged. If you complete those prior to that date, then you can go home and it's a half day. And if you don't, then you have to stick around and your, your safe school videos need to be done before the start of the school year. So most, most teachers got them all done, so they can be like, I'm out of here with kids. So just a thought, I, you know, I thought it was kind of a nice thing, and if you're someone who wants to sit around on a Friday afternoon all by yourself and watch safe school videos, good for you.
Discussion action items policy. Jamie, we have a, no, oh, Alisa, sorry, Alisa. We have a whole body.
But I don't think, I think, you know. So for A, we have a first review of the policies in the one thousand. We have a first review of the suggested deletion of policies in the three thousand. Policy three, five, four, one. Number one, C is first review of the suggested deletion policies in the five thousands. This is policy five, one, two, three, and regulation five, one, three, two. Moving on sixteen is new policies in the five thousands, including policy five, one, five, six, and transportation. Is a first review, review of suggested revision date changes of the policies in the five thousands. Fifty one, forty one, point two, five. Fifty one, forty one, one, three. Eight changes on those. Keep going, first review of suggested deletion of policies in the six thousand. That is policy six, two, two, zero. G is a first review for the suggested new policy in the six thousands. And the one policy there, six, two, zero, one. Is the first review of revision of date change of policies in the six thousand. The list is six, one, four, one, one, three, two, six, six, one, four, two, one, one, zero, one. Six, one, four, five, six, one, five, one, six, one, five, three, six, one, seven, one, and six, one, seven, two, point one. Home stretch here, yes, right. The first review of the suggested deletion of policies in nine thousands. They are ninety two, ten, ninety, three hundred, and ninety, one, four. And finally, letter J is suggested revisions of policies in nine thousands. Ninety, thirty. Ninety, one, ten. Ninety, one, twenty. Ninety, one, thirty. Ninety, one, thirty, two, point two. Ninety, two, thirty. Ninety, two, forty. Ninety, two, seventy. Ninety, three, eleven. Ninety, three, twelve. Ninety, three, thirteen. Ninety, three, twenty one. Ninety, three, twenty two. Ninety, three, twenty three. Ninety, three, twenty five, point two. Ninety, three, twenty five, point three, and ninety, three, twenty seven. So these are all been recommended by the committee and. Ninety three, twenty five, point three, and ninety three, twenty seven. So these are all been recommended by the committee and suggestions or. Questions.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Lisa. Um. That closes our discussion and action items for the night. Administrative reports, I think Jeff and Elise, Maranis, if they didn't have.
We have nothing.
I have a, I'm sorry. Um, Mariana, we just are considering putting. For the budget that is significantly higher than the high budget that we already were considering putting forth. It, I I asked this before too. It it certainly would. Be helpful to know where the town is and what that potential impact would be. Because I think that should be clear in the minds of the um finance folks. When they're making their decision too. I mean, it should be clear to the public that this, you know. Whether whether they approve it or or disapprove it, they should it should be associated with. A known impact to the community. So I don't know how, if there's any role you can play in helping us find that out, but.
So so I put in a request um to both Kevin, Siri, and the new director of finance to get their revenue numbers. What they're projecting for revenue aid, not company for yet. And I put in a request. Uh, from the town assessor to get a copy of there's a letter that gets, so the grand list, which is, you know, what obviously determines the mill rate. Up is due and um to this date by January thirty first. So typically she then issues a letter that summarizes it and you can see what the increases on the grand list. And not gotten that yet, though I don't know if she's necessarily uh that letter together. She may have just signed it, you know, last week. I don't know if they got the extension. I can then calculate, I mean, that's what I used to do.
Yeah, no, I I really appreciate that cuz I think it's.
I may estimate, you know, a mill week.
Right.
Will with certain, but I need that revenue.
Right, right.
And the the grand list.
That also depends upon what's going on with the town. We're doing our budget meeting, so. And we're up at.
Right, I would make certain assumptions, but I could calculate what are impacting. I wouldn't have the the, you know, the town side.
I just have a quick question. I noticed in the paper, I think it was Stonington that I read that moved forward with a seven percent. Was it eight? I thought that it was seven that they voted on, but they moved forward with an eight percent. And it was voted yes.
The board of Ed voted yes.
Okay, okay, because I think that that's honestly, we're not the only ones that are grappling with the very same things. Other districts are going to be doing the very same thing. They're going to be faced with doing what's right with their lens. For their people, right? Um, so I'm just really curious actually to see. Who does, who actually does that? And I'm I can say that I'm proud to, if that's the way that we go, you know, that's something that I can stand behind. That's the only one that you all know of.
We gotta be careful that we're uh on a report, so why don't we? Uh, keep moving. You guys are good with your reports. Moving on to committee reports, there was an FFO meeting. Uh, right before this meeting and we talked about the non-referring account for those of you who remember.
Yeah.
Five years ago or six years ago, at the time, we did have this discussion. We've said at that point not to move forward, but I think there's much more compelling reasons. Now, we're gonna put a summary together of a proposal of what we think it would look like. And discuss it at a future board meeting, probably in March. It's not a great rush. There's a little bit of a rush, but not great, but probably in a March, one of our March meetings. Topic.
Yep.
Um, and that was the only topic. And then I think there's a policy being tomorrow. Cancelled, okay. So that is any cave.
Asset tomorrow.
Of facilities asset, yeah.
Yeah, that's right. We do need to add that.
Tomorrow, there is a meeting webinar again. They're supposed to have more questions and answers for us um on the. Can't remember the name of the reading, but they'll play them now. Um, and then they have third board chairs. And they are moving around and checking webinars. There is a, the next webinar is two sixteen at eleven. And then there's one, two, twenty one at three. So they heard that the noon time spot wasn't working or the day wasn't working, so they're trying to move them around.
What it's worth, I voted, I kind of said I didn't want, because we don't get great attendance and my worry is if you split them into two, you're gonna get. Like, are people really gonna need to? Probably not. That's my only, I raised that as a concern, but they didn't. So we'll see what happens.
Mars the reading at twelve and then Jeff and I attended the area nine breakfast. Friday.
Right, yeah, it's best Friday, yeah.
It was cold. We had a nice breakfast, um, but it was well attended and I guess it basically boils down to they know we want money. They just don't have it.
Everybody wants, yeah.
I have a board meeting with them on Thursday.
Okay, great. So that closes um. Committee reports and we're on board comments, future agenda items. Hearing none.
Thank you, everybody.
In favor, say aye.
Nice job, Eric.